Welcome Wichita and good morning to all of you. Thank you for joining us for this council meeting. I will call the meeting to order. With us this morning is Pastor Marcia Haney of St. Mark United Methodist Church to provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to stand for both.
Let us pray. Almighty Creator, we come this morning to say thank you. Thank you for our life, our health, and our strength. Thank you for our mayor. Thank you for our city council members. Thank you, Lord, for every city employee, every elected official. Thank you for another January that you have blessed our city staff to come up with creative and innovative ideas in 2025. Lord, we are looking forward to this year. We're looking forward to working together and making Wichita even greater than what it is. We ask your choice blessings upon this city council and meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You Pastor Haney, and thank you to the Greater Wichita Ministerial League for hosting the MLK celebration yesterday. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting, January 14, 2025.
Are there any changes or corrections to the meeting minutes? I see none. I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, January 14, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Awards and Proclamations. Today's proclamations are Junior League of Wichita Month, National Mentor Month, and Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month.
May please ask the Junior League of Wichita to please come forward. I would also like to invite Councilmember Maggie Ballard. The proclamation reads, "The City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas the Junior League of Wichita was established in January 1925 with a mission to develop the potential of women, improve the community through the effective action and leadership of trained volunteers. Whereas for 100 years, the women of the Junior League of Wichita have dedicated their time and effort to making a positive impact on the Wichita community, addressing critical needs, and improving the lives of individuals through initiatives focused on education, health, and community service. Whereas the Junior League of Wichita has fostered leadership development, empowered women to take an active role in community affairs, and provided a platform for collaboration with local organizations to address the most pressing social issues of the time. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council do hereby proclaim January 2025 as Junior League of Wichita Month in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to recognize and celebrate the impactful work of the Junior League of Wichita as they commemorate their 100th anniversary and join in honoring their continued service to our community."
Good morning, honorable councilmembers and Mayor Wu. I am the president of the Junior League of Wichita. My name is Amy Slater. As you mentioned, the Junior League is an organization of women committed to advancing leadership through volunteer action, collaboration, and training. 100 years ago, 10 charter members dared to dream of a brighter future for our community. Due to their belief in the power of possibility, we are here today to honor this remarkable milestone and honor our founders and the thousands of women who have served as Junior League members for their courage, resilience, and vision to make the Wichita community a better place. Our legacy is written in the hearts of those the league has served and of our members who are inspired and empowered to do great things. The Junior League is proud of the impact of the work and of our financial commitments to the Wichita community. Most recently, a $2 million gift to Exploration Places Outdoor Playscape, which will no doubt have an impact for our local families and on the growth and development of the city. For the past 100 years, the league members have trained women to have a positive impact while addressing critical needs to improve the lives of our citizens, such as delivering milk to needy families in the 20s and 30s, starting a dental clinic for children needing dental care in the 1940s, collecting 1.3 million bandages and delivering them to local hospitals in the 1950s, helping establish the Wichita Youth Home, a residential home for teenagers in the 70s, funding the Pride of the Pray exhibit at the zoo in the late 90s, and providing funding to the Child Advocacy Center in the 2000s. These are just a few of the many highlights. On behalf of the Junior League of Wichita, I want to thank you for your leadership and dedication to our city. The league is proud to be a part of this community and work along others to build a brighter future. We look forward to serving the community for the next 100 years and beyond. Thank you.
May please ask the representatives of Youth Horizons to please come forward. The proclamation reads, "The City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to raise awareness and celebrate the powerful impact of mentoring relationships, recruit new members, and encourage institutions to integrate quality mentoring into their policies and practices. Whereas mentoring programs have been found to positively impact many aspects of mental well-being, including reducing unhealthy coping mechanisms, improving interpersonal relationships, and reducing parental stress. Whereas mentoring programs have a significant positive impact on youth academic achievement, school connectedness, and engagement, as well as educational success, which can lead to outcomes such as improved behavior, attendance, grades, and test scores. Whereas mentoring is an innovative, evidence-based practice, and uniquely is both a prevention and intervention strategy that can support young people of all demographics and backgrounds in all aspects of their lives. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council do hereby proclaim January 2025 as National Mentoring Month in the City of Wichita, and encourage men, women, and families to volunteer to become mentors, and thank the mentors who are serving our community."
Good morning, Mayor Wu and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to be before you, to bring highlight to the mentoring work that is happening at Youth Horizons. We are working hard to serve young people, and we do it in a school-based and community-based fashion, where we match boys and girls with Christian men and women who are about impacting the lives of young people. There are some data that I want to share with you regarding how impactful the work of mentoring is. 92% kids are more likely to volunteer in the community. If they're mentored, 75% more hold leadership positions in extracurricular activities. 74% say their mentor contributed to their long-term success. 85% say that mentors helped them with their school and education. 58% say their mentor supported their mental health. 60% of the former mentees under 40 seek advice from their childhood mentors. We see each and every day the positive work that is happening between men and women who stand in the gap for young people. We're excited that we get this opportunity to bring highlight to the work that's happening in the community, because we know that our young people are the next generation to give back, to make Wichita a better place. I'm so grateful for the work that we're doing, and I'm thankful that the community is standing in the gap to help young people achieve and become and thrive in the city. And I'd also would be remiss if I didn't ask our Vice Chair of Youth Horizons, Joy Atkins, to say a few words for us.
Good morning. It is truly an honor to be on the board of Youth Horizons, second generation. My in-laws were part of the founding people who helped support it in the beginning. And I'm really passionate about mentoring, and particularly this program and what it does for children. I was thinking, I think once, when I was on the school board, Robert worked for the district, and afterwards, when I was joining his board, he asked me why I was so passionate about kids. And we had a real long, frank discussion about the kind of home I grew up in, and the fact that it wasn't a good home. There were a lot of difficulties. And most people don't know that part of my story. They just see the joy today, and they think I was just born this way. But I wasn't. When I was 32 years old, I was taking a class, and as part of the class in graduate school, they asked us to sit down and write about all the events and all the people that had had impact in our lives. And when I finished, at the age of 32, I had the over 80 names of people over my life, and all the little cities we moved to, and the different churches we went to, and all the little places where people just popped up. Maybe a caring teacher, maybe a caring adult, a neighbor, just somebody in the community that saw me and thought I had potential important to my life. And that's why I'm passionate about mentoring, because that work that we do here in Wichita, and by the way, we're really good at making faithful investments in people. When we do that, we have more great things in our community. So thank you for this opportunity this morning to talk to our city about how important mentoring is for our kids. Thank you.
May I please ask councilmembers who are mentors in our community to come forward and also provide this proclamation for National Mentoring Month? And just as a reminder, anyone can sign up to become a mentor, whether it's with Youth Horizons, Big Brothers Big Sisters. We have lots of programs here in our community, including USD 259's Future Ready Advocate Mentors. So Pastor Haney, this is a communication to you and the Greater Wichita Ministerial League that we want more mentors in our community and all in Wichita are encouraged to become mentors. At this time, may please ask the Wichita Fire Department, Councilmember Becky Tuttle, Valerie Sokol, Darrell Coles, Chief Snow, Dustin Winter, Dal Gaines, Ted Bush, Maxie Wiggins, Keisha Humphries, Scott Evans, Travis Francis, and Colleen Pate to please come forward. The individuals named are part of a committee that started about a year ago to get to this position in time, thanks to also the leadership of Chief Snow and Councilmember Tuttle for getting us to the Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month proclamation. The proclamation reads, "The City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas City of Wichita firefighters serve our community and put the safety of others above their own, often working in an environment of smoke, soot, and other carcinogens. Whereas according to research, firefighters have a 9% greater chance of being diagnosed with cancer, and a 14% greater chance of dying from cancer than the general population. And firefighters' occupational cancer is the leading cause of line-of-duty deaths in professional firefighters. Whereas Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month takes place in January, however, these efforts must be recognized every day. Whereas early detection of cancer through routine screening leads to earlier treatment and better disease outcomes, including improved survival and reduced morbidity. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council do hereby proclaim the month of January 2025 as Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to show appreciation to our former and current firefighters, and encourage our brave firefighters to get screened for cancer early and often."
Good morning, Mayor, City Councilmembers, and citizens of Wichita. Thank you very much for this proclamation. Very honored to have Councilmember Tuttle be a pioneer with us as we journey through this new venue for us in an attempt to not only bring awareness to regarding cancer and the significant impact that it has on firefighters, but also to be our leader in our quest of trying to change the risk or reducing the risk as we move forward. I'm very honored today to stand before you as we recognize January as Firefighter Career Awareness Month. Firefighters face a significantly increased risk of cancer due to hazardous materials they encounter in the line of duty. This proclamation highlights not only the sacrifices our firefighters make, but also the importance of continuing education, prevention, and support for those impacted by cancer in our fire service family. At the Wichita Fire Department, we are committed to reducing risk by implementing best practices, enhancing decontamination procedures, and fostering a culture of health and wellness. We are grateful for the council's support in ensuring our firefighters are protected, and I now encourage our community to join us in raising awareness about this critical issue. Together, we can honor those that have been affected and take steps to protect the health and safety of those who serve. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Special USD 259 graduation rates presentation.
Good morning, Mayor Wu, City Councilmembers. We are honored to be here today to share and celebrate our successes in our graduation rate. I am Gil Alvarez Deputy Superintendent for the Wichita Public Schools, and with me today is Lauren Hatfield, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, that we would like to share and celebrate our graduation rate increase. It all started, it wasn't by accident. There was actually an intentional focus on how are we going to continue to increase our graduation rate, and here in just a little bit, we'll share some data with you. But it starts with our strategic plan, and I know Superintendent Beilefeld came before you and kind of shared some of our strategic plan. But on the screen are the three specific goals that helped us begin this venture of increasing graduation rates for our students so they have opportunities. So it was all about breaking down barriers, eliminating obstacles, and creating opportunities for our students. So goal number one is the increased academic achievement and graduation rate, and that's what we're here to talk about today. But it's more than just graduation rate as academic achievement. As you know, there's some formative assessments, there's summative assessments that we also look at to increase academic achievement. But it's not just about getting a diploma as well. So as we make our way into goal number two, which is prepare students for life, college, and career success, we want our students to get a diploma plus something else that will help them prepare them to be successful post-secondary. Some of these or else things can be things like credentials, certifications, work-based learning, as well as college credit. So we know if our students engage in other things while they're in high school, they'll get their diploma and then be prepared for life after high school and getting into their own successes post-secondary. And then our third goal is create and enhance safety and belonging. So those are our three specific goals, but we're going to hear, we're going to talk about and spend a little time on increasing graduation rates. So on the screen, our strategic plan goal number one specifically, our SMARQ goal, is increase graduation rate from 79.2% to 85% by 2029. And there is some dates up here that are significant, kind of, we look at milestones in order for us to kind of tell our story. So in 2010 is actually when the new graduation rate formula came into play. So before 2010, it would have been a whole different formula on how they measured graduation rates. So we don't look past 2010 so we can really compare and how well we're doing currently. So in 2010, we started at 63.1% of our students graduating from high school. In 2018, that's significant because that's where we started our strategic plan, that we really said, we're not where we need to be. We need to really focus our efforts and strategies to make sure that our students have opportunities. So one of our goals in our very first strategic plan was to increase graduation rates. So we were at 74%. And in 2020 was our highest at the time, was 80.5%. Now, we put a little asterisk by the 2020 because that was when the pandemic came, and that was when our students' fourth quarter did not go back to school. So we had to do some things in order to help our students during that particular time. But then in 2023, which was two years ago, we had a 79.2% graduation rate. And this is significant because our graduating class of 2024 was at 84.3% graduation rate. That is a 21.2 percentage point increase since 2010. That is a 10.3 percentage point increase since 2018, and that is a 5.1 percentage point increase compared to our class of 2023, which is the largest single increase that we have seen in a year from one cohort to the next. Obviously, this class was very special. If you think about it, they came into high school in 2020 doing remote learning. So this was, people were concerned on how are they going to get connected to school because they're learning, going into a new high school experience. They don't get the community community building they get with building friendships, they had to do it online at that particular time. But to see them persevere, to see them, the resiliency to be able to get to an 84.3% was extremely amazing. So we are excited to share that goal that we have made for them. I'm also, it's dear to my heart too, because my daughter, my oldest one, is also a 2024 graduate. So these are the students that would have been seniors last year and are now either in the workforce or now in college doing some great things with us as well. So some people are asked, well, how do you calculate graduation rate? So you can see that there is a formula, so the number of graduates divided by the cohort times 100 will give you that graduation rate, but it's a little bit more difficult than that because we have, when you look at the cohort, we have to look at all students that come in as ninth graders, and that makes up our cohort. So those ninth graders, then plus any transfers that come in, we're responsible to make sure that they graduate. And there are some that transfer out, but not everybody that transfers out will either benefit us because some actually will go against our graduation rate. For example, if we have a student in 10th grade, they came in as a ninth grader, so we count them, and in their 10th grade year, they decide to transfer to another district, they moved. Well, if they move and go into another district, then we can say that district picked them up, so that doesn't hurt us in our graduation rate, we just removed them. However, if a student drops out, if a student's whereabouts unknown, we don't know where they were or where they are currently, that does negatively impact our graduation rate. So it is extremely important, and we just talked about mentoring, that's one of our strategies. Mentoring was a huge success for us to make sure that students are getting what they need, on track to graduate. So it was great to see the Mentoring Month earlier this morning. So just wanted to make sure that people understand, the graduation rate is not just about saving seniors, and a lot of people think that their senior year is where we spend most of our time. We actually have to do early warning indicators all the way back into ninth grade, making sure that they're on track to graduate so they can get to where they need to be by their senior year. I'm going to turn over now to Lauren, who's going to get a little bit more into the data.
Good morning. I get to share data and tell stories, so I get the best of all the worlds. As I go into the presentation, I do want to draw your attention, you do have a handout in front of you, that should give you some specifics about where individual subgroups have been for the last four years and where they are now, and we'll talk a little more about that subgroup data in just a minute. So the screen in front of you now has a chart that shows our race and gender subgroups for our five largest demographic subgroups in Wichita Public Schools. So Hispanic, white, black, Asian, multiracial makes up about 90% of our student population in the class of 2024, and this shows you their graduation rates for that entire subgroup together, that's the blue line. The red line are males in that racial subgroup, and then the teal line are females. Females are outperforming males in every single subgroup where there is a male and female breakdown. That is not just a Wichita Public Schools trend, that is a national trend, and so we are working really hard on not downplaying the females, we still want them to raise, but in helping our males catch the females in all of the subgroup breakdown. And then this screen has 24 out of 36, which yes, reduces to two-thirds if we're reducing fractions. I was a former math teacher, so can't leave that off of there, but the 24 and the 36 matter. KSDE, the Kansas State Department of Education, counts any subgroup that you have 10 or more kids in. So Wichita Public Schools has 36 subgroups that count. We have the most subgroups of any school district in the state, which is probably not surprising just because of our number of kids. 24 of those 36 had their highest graduation rate ever in the class of 2024, and I'm going to highlight some of them that we're particularly proud of, and then I'm going to read through the list of all 24 just really fast so you get a sense of what they are. So four that we're particularly proud of, our students with free lunch, 82% of our students that have free lunch, that qualify for free lunch graduated for the class of 2024. Students with disabilities, those students that have an IEP, 81.9% of those students graduated. Our virtual students, 72.1, and then our foster students, 75.9, which if you look at your handout, is a massive jump from the class of 2023. So here's just a quick rundown of all the subgroups, all 24 of them that had their highest. Our overall, our males, our females, our Hispanic overall, our Hispanic females, white overall, white males, white females, African-American overall, African-American males, African-American females, multiracial overall, multiracial males, multiracial females, American Indian females, free lunch overall, free lunch males, free lunch females, reduced lunch females, students with disabilities overall, students with disabilities males, students with disabilities females, virtual and foster. That's pretty amazing that two-thirds of the subgroups all achieved their highest graduation rate with the class of 2024. So how? How do you do this? How do you make such a big jump in a little bit of time? Part of it is innovative programming. Our district has done some pretty amazing work within the confines of alternative education and at-risk programming to create some innovative programming. Some of that has been mentioned earlier. Our Future Ready Centers, our GAP program, which is Graduation Advocacy Program, which fills the gaps for neglected and delinquent students as they transition back into school, FLEX, night school, our Future Ready Advocates, our mentoring programs. I leaned over to Kelly, I said, how apropos that they're here, we didn't even plant that. But the mentoring groups are massive, and so that innovative programming is how we're going to continue to raise graduation rates. Data quality improvements, Gil mentioned earlier, not all enters and exits count for you, some count against you, so making sure that our cohort is the right cohort size. Timmy's always my example kid. If Timmy moves to Texas, but we don't code that right, Timmy counts against us. So we need to make sure we're doing all the coding on the backside, all those humans that are doing data entry, to make sure that our cohort size is the right cohort size and we're not unintentionally messing with what the data should be. And then early intervention. We are the best, I would put us up against anybody with responding to student need towards the end of their high school career, but we need to continue to improve what our early intervention strategies are so that we can be responsive instead of reactive to our students that maybe start to waver away from being on track to graduate. And then really, the overall is relentlessly pursuing every student, and that means something different for every single kid. But that is our job, to know the kids and to relentlessly pursue them, find a way to connect with them, and then find a way to get them across the stage to improve, yes, our graduation rate, but these students' lives. We do an exit survey for our seniors, and for the class of 2024, this is a mind-boggling statistic to me, one in five of our class of 24 graduates are the first in their family to graduate from high school. One in five. Us raising our graduation rate changes Wichita and changes the trajectory of families for generations to come because they broke the barrier and they are the first. I want to just end with some stories from the class of 2024 because that's what we connect with most. I've been given permission to share these stories and the students' first names so that you have a little bit of an idea about what it means to relentlessly pursue every student. We'll start with my favorite, which is a story out of Sowers. Students can graduate all the way through September 30th and count as an on-time graduate. And Sowers has a night school program, and there was a young man named Anthony who hadn't finished his requirements yet, and they were like, hey, get in here, finish, get in here, finish. So he was coming to night school and making up his credits, and he had a friend named Christian who came to pick him up. Well, Christian also hadn't graduated yet, and then Christian got jealous that Anthony was finishing, and then Christian started showing up for night school too so that he could graduate. That's two more kids, two more lives changed because they got a high school diploma. There's Ramel, who was in the juvenile delinquent facility here in Wichita, then he entered our GAP program at Gateway to help bridge the gap back into school, got enough credits to enter our FLEX program, and then got a diploma. Now he's working and a contributing member of Wichita, he's working at Goodwill, doing great things there. There's Deshaun, who bounced from home to home but joined a counseling mentor small group at lunchtime at his high school and found connection with his counselors and his classmates and was able to graduate. There's Blanca, who went to the healthcare FRC and is now working as a CNA while she's working on her RN because of the healthcare FRC. There's Jose, who wanted to go to the manufacturing FRC, but he was behind on credits, so he worked really, really hard, and he recovered his credits so that he could go to the manufacturing FRC, and he got a high school diploma and associate's degree in the exact same weekend when he graduated, and now he works at Techtron. There's Destiny, who went to our early college academy at Northwest and got over 60 college hours while she was in high school and is now a junior at K-State and studying microbiology. And there's Adrian, whose basketball team developed a tracking system for grades that kept him on track when otherwise he says he wouldn't have, and says that's why he graduated. So what does it mean to relentlessly pursue every student? It's different. It's different for every single one of them. We have over 13,000 high school students, and relentlessly pursuing them is different for all 13,000, but our job is to find a way to connect with all 13,000 of them and get across the stage. I hope that we can force Kelly and the Board of Education to change the strategic plan goal four years sooner than they planned on it because 85% is right in front of us, and I hope that we can pass that and we can change that soon. Thank you for your time this morning, and Mr. Alvarez and I stand ready for any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Gil and Lauren. We'll begin with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys, and thank you to the whole school district for everything you're doing. I'm really impressed by a lot of the increases we have here. I suppose just three quick questions. What have we done to help catch up from COVID? I know a lot of students were behind on reading scores and math scores coming out of COVID. Some of them still have some of that kind of clinging to them there. So what have you guys done to help catch up in those areas?
So in terms of reading scores and math scores, in high school, they're actually only tested in reading and math from the state as sophomores. So our English and math scores in high school are trending in the right direction. Our English scores for our sophomores had a massive jump for last year sophomores than the year before, but it's really understanding what is good core instruction and teaching to the level of rigor of the standard. So there are standards for all classes, and if you don't teach to the appropriate rigor level, the kids are always going to be behind and fall further behind, and so really it's making sure in every class, every day, we're hitting that rigor level because the best intervention is strong core instruction. So it's really delivering that strong core instruction so that they don't fall behind just because we aren't hitting the correct rigor level. Our average ACT score has gone up in the last couple of years. We've tested 40% more kids in the ACT work keys and maintained the percentage level of kids that are earning certifications in the work keys, and so our data at the high school level is trending in the correct direction.
Thank you.
Just a couple, we also had a robust summer school programming, as well as every school has interventions, so if a student is falling behind, they will get extra support and intervention for reading and for math as well.
Thank you. And then there's two groups here that really kind of tug at your heartstrings. You have homeless on here and foster. Could you talk about those two areas, anything extra that you are doing for these kids to help catch them up? And then also, maybe some hard numbers, how many identified homeless children do we have in the school district and foster kids, if you have those?
So we have some programs that are specifically for foster or homeless students. One of those is our Transitions Program that is run out of Chester Lewis Alternative High School, and the Transitions Program is meant for students who just aren't ready for that big, large, comprehensive setting. You know, our foster students bounce from school to school to school and family to family to family, and trying to give them some sense of stability. Transitions is also meant for you're here, but we know you're not going to be here for very long, so instead of bouncing you from school to school, we're going to stay here. Our McKenney-Vento program through Title I serves all of our homeless students, and homeless could mean I'm couch surfing, homeless could mean I'm living out of my car, homeless could mean, right, there's lots of different things. But those services are available for every single one of our students, and homeless students also don't have to transition schools. So if you're a McKenney-Vento student, that's a homeless student, and you were at Heights, let's say, and then we find out, A, the house you're living in is really in northwest attendance area, you don't have to switch schools because that's even more disruptive to what you're already doing. You get to stay at Heights, and we will get you to Heights every day so that that way there's, there's so much disruption in the rest of your life, what can we do to minimize the disruption so that you get to stay? I don't have the number of homeless students in front of me, but we can certainly look that up and get that to you. And then foster students, just in the Heights attendance area alone, there are 130-plus group home beds for foster students just in the Heights attendance area alone, and so it's more than we ever think that it could be, and providing as much stability as possible for those students is key.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to congratulate you on the tremendous work you're doing and how important it really is. It's not easy, it's not easy work, and congratulations to you for doing a great job. I'm fortunate, I get to hear some more good things from my son, who works in your system, and he's appreciative of your leadership, and I am too.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just wanted to say thank you for kind of meeting kids where they are, everybody has such a unique situation, and just appreciate going above and beyond.
Just a quick question, this handout that was given to us, is that also available online so that the community can see these really great numbers?
Yes, it is on our district website, and we update it every year, so when the class of 2025 rolls around, you'll get to see it again, hopefully with some even higher numbers.
And just remind us, what's the student body at USD 259, and also, how many of those young people are part of the free and reduced lunches?
So over 80% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. So, and then for high school, we have just over 13,000 students, and overall, we're sitting right around 47,000 students.
Thank you very much. I see no further questions. I simply wanted to say thank you to all of the staff, all the educators that are part of USD 259. I'm a product of USD 259, proud Blue Ace, and just again, want to say that everyone who is watching is an interested individual who is helping invest in the lives of young people, and I'm just very grateful that we have a community that's engaged, and we're going to get more mentors hopefully with Mentoring Month. But again, we can all play our part in helping with these numbers, but congratulations again on these amazing numbers and almost hitting the 85% mark. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
We have the public agenda, and the public agenda allows for up to five speakers to have five minutes each to address the council. No action will be taken relative to items on the public agenda other than referral to the city manager for information as necessary. Speakers will please state their name and address for the record. A time clock will display the speaker's remaining time to speak. Order and rules of decorum will be observed, and the first speaker is James Barfield, Reparations.
Morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm going to get right into this. Excuse me. On February the 13th, 2024, a taxpaying American citizen voter in Wichita approached the council with a request. That request was for the city council to look at reparations for black residents who have faced injustice and discrimination. The request was presented during Tuesday city council meeting by local activist Mary Dean. I'm going to skip to the end, the conclusion of that, and at the conclusion of the request, Councilmember Brandon Johnson said the request... And at the conclusion of the request, Councilmember Brandon Johnson said the request would be submitted to the city's legal department for review. Then it will be presented to the city council for discussion. After waiting for 90 days with no response from the council, with no information being provided, that the request was unlawful in violation of any city, state, or federal Mary Dean again approached the council on June the 11th of 2024. At that meeting, she stated she was here to address the matter that has been pending for more than 60 days, when in actuality it was more than 90 days. And I'm going to skip through some of this and I'm going to go right to the point here. At that meeting, Councilmember Johnson stated that there were some complexities and that there is something that is truly important. Stated, this is Councilman Johnson, that we have been working on it and have most of the audience's proposal done. Stated it is not complete yet. Mary Dean left that meeting with a understanding that her request was being honored by the And there were some other discussions. And at one point, Mary Dean's council representative, Mr. Councilman Hoheisel, stated that he would forward to the rest of the commissioners information that had been provided him by Mary Dean. Mary Dean stated that that was fine with her. Now, I'm going to skip to January the 2nd of 2025. Mary Dean received a letter from the mayor, Lily Wu. This letter was showing that Mayor Lily Wu was breaking ranks with the duly-elected council members for the city of Wichita. This was Mary Wu, I'm sorry, excuse, forgive me. Mary, I'm sorry. Lily Wu's second attempt at disassociating herself from the council. Now in politics, there's a name for that and that's called going rogue. Lily Wu stated she's come out against creating a commission to study reparations for the city's black residents, state something that a city activist had been pushing since 2023. Now in Mayor Wu's letter, which is filled with opinions but lacking any substance or any factual information, she stated, I'm sorry, she stated she didn't support local reparations ordinance and that reparations should be handled at the federal level. You know, I have here a list of cities in the United States that have already appointed commissions to study reparations in the United States and none of them are with the federal government. And this list of cities brings from our second largest city in the country, Los Angeles, California, to one of the smallest cities, Asheville, now North Carolina. And now in addition to this list, the city of Tulsa, Oklahoma has been added. Miss Lily Wu, in addition to going rogue in her letter, proceeded to insult the intelligence of every African-American in this city. Also, that letter offended most of the people that I know in this city. Now, this was also Mayor Wu's second attempt, well not attempt, she succeeded, in disrespecting African-American citizens that stand at this very podium to make requests. These are taxpayers in the city of Wichita and these are voting people and they are entitled to respect of this entire commission. Now, how much time do I have left?
Your time has expired, Mr. James.
Because I have an additional two minutes?
Finish out your thought.
Okay. My thoughts are, ma'am, that you not only, in my opinion, you not only violated the ethical concerns which caused Ms. Dean to file an ethical complaint against you, you also succeeded, ma'am, in violating the federal laws of the United States and explicitly the Fourth Amendment to the United States Constitution of America, which deals with due process of law that is afforded to every American citizen, okay? Also, you violated the Fifth Amendment, which also deals with due process of law. So I'm going to make my own request, Mary Lily Wu, and that is that you immediately extend a public apology to every African-American in the city of Wichita. And my second one is that you send a letter to the city manager tendering your resignation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Do I have any council members who would like to speak? I see none. Madam Clerk, can you please explain the next process?
For the public comment? Okay. Next up, we have the consent agenda items, one through 22, or one through 12, sorry. And for public comment, as a reminder to those who wish to speak to an item, please state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for your comments. There is a countdown clock on the monitor at the podium that will change color from green to red when your five minutes is about to expire. Order and rules of decorum will be observed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That means that there are four spots left for public agenda. If anyone in the audience would like to speak, you may come to the podium, state your name and your address and you can address the entire council.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you. My name's Stephanie Pittman. I live at 2828 North Wild Rose Court, Wichita, 67205. I am here to speak about the proposed golf cart ordinance that I feel severely diminishes my ability and my neighbors' ability to utilize our neighborhoods in District 5, in District 6, in Crestview, in all of the areas around town. Specifically, specifically, I believe that the golf cart ordinance that's being proposed, and I understand the intention to provide some sort of safety for the community, but it is, as it's written, the most restrictive regulation on golf cart usage in the United States. There is absolutely no other golf cart ordinance that is as restrictive, creating unnecessary limitations for residents and neighborhoods and our enjoyment. I and many others do not support. More importantly, there's a transparency issue in that this ordinance was never brought to anyone on a district advisory board. It was brought during the middle of winter. It was rammed through. Unlike the ordinance that we just heard about, there was no dragging of feet. There was no other type of comment or public comment afforded. It was dragged through. It was written in December. It was brought up during a snowstorm on January 7th. It was brought up for the first reading on January 14th and it's set for the second reading and approval today. None of the golf communities have been notified. We all have Facebook pages. We all have homeowners associations. There was absolutely nothing that let anybody know this was coming. Why this is more important than you would know is just like those high schoolers that you just heard about, just like other people in our community, there's those of them like me. I heard Reg Booth give his testimony 22 years ago. I decided from that testimony of Reflection Ridge that I would get my undergrad degree, which I did, go to law school. I financed myself for one purpose only, and that is so I could live freely in Reflection Ridge and drive my golf cart. I do not golf. I just want the freedom to enjoy my neighborhood like I deem fit. It's funny because this weekend, this is our Reflection Ridge Area Magazine's story. There's a picture of a single mother here with her child who is working three jobs just to live in Reflection Ridge. It's really interesting because the very first paragraph that she has here is that her favorite thing in enjoying her new home is being embraced in her neighborhood and nightly golf cart drives to make connections with the neighbors. This is why we live in our communities. This is why we're here. It's very emotional because it's something that we enjoy. I also allow, when my children are home, my licensed drivers, when I am working, which I work constantly, so does my husband, I allow them to take the golf cart to our house to the pool. Or they also meet up at Reflection Ridge Community and they study for finals as a community. I see no problem with that. They're licensed drivers. There are ways to restrict this ordinance so that it makes sense, so it protects public safety, so it restricts underage drivers. And so if it's equipped with the correct equipment, like all the other United States ordinances allow, it's able to drive at night. So this smacks like there's an appearance of impropriety because of the way it was shoved through. I'm not quite sure what it is. I would guess it's trying to get Hooligan golf cart drivers out of neighborhoods, from other neighborhoods, but that I just don't know because there was absolutely nothing that I can find that would lead to this sort of draconian ordinance. So please, council members, I've contacted most of you. I was told it was still going to be pushed through. I would ask you to pull this, do the correct transparent thing, send this to district advisory boards, notify homeowners associations, and allow public comment.
Thank you, Stephanie. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you Mayor. Stephanie, I know that we've communicated. I agree that the current ordinance or the proposed ordinance is overburdened some. However, I want to confirm with City Legal too, as it stands right now without an ordinance, there's a complete prohibition in all golf cart usage in the city on city streets, correct?
Councilmember, that's correct based on state law.
So the first read last week allowed some permissible use that was not permitted prior to that.
That is also correct.
So, you and I have talked about this. I agree with you on that. From this bench, I tried to make changes to allow more permissible uses, allowed in the downtown core, allow driver, individuals with a driver license, not just 18 to be able to use it. I tried to allow them to be able to cross artillery streets. And so I agree, I think we should make changes. However, I also feel that this ordinance moves us in the right direction because currently any use of it on city streets prior to today, if it would get passed, was not a permissible use and was operating illegally in the city already. So I think we should move in that right direction and hopefully in the future, we can bring back amendments to be able to make it more flexible so into individuals, but I don't have four votes to do that right now. And so I wanted to move in the right direction.
May I comment? So you and I did talk about this and as I explained to you prior, when we first moved into the community, it was part of the law. So we have been acting, driving as we were in a street legal golf cart. We all have lights. There's nobody that drives in the dead of night with no lights. I would also point out that this law did not change and I am looking at the state statute between 2015 and 2018, there was no notification. We didn't know and so we have been operating as we were still under state law. So I think, you know, while I understand ignorance is not an excuse, but it is. Nobody understood that we were driving without a state law. That being said, I'm not saying that it's not in the public interest to have an ordinance. What I am saying is you're in the dead of winter right now. I guarantee you, there's not very many people right now that are driving around on their golf cart. We have some time. We have some time to do this the right way, to follow the process, to go get public commentary and to be able to amend the ordinance so we don't have to try to revisit it.
Thank you. I just want to be very clear that if we do pull it today, driving a golf cart is still legal in the community and not be a permissible use if we pull it today. So I just want to be very clear on the record that anybody driving a golf cart, if we pull it, is in violation of city and state law.
I will do a follow-up to law. I actually asked a direct question to law regarding this very ordinance. So state law actually says, operation of golf carts where and when? A, it shall be unlawful for any person to operate a golf cart. Number two, on any public highway or street within the corporate limits of any city unless authorized by such city. So my question to city law is, is it currently illegal to operate a golf cart without this proposed new ordinance? Can someone read the email that was sent to us on January 15th?
Mayor, that is correct. It's the state law.
I will further read that email because it was very clear. It said, unless the city passes an ordinance, the operation of a golf cart on any public street within the corporate city limits currently is illegal. The proposed ordinance would allow the operation of golf carts on city streets with a posted speed limit of 30 miles per hour or less outside the downtown core area as defined by the ordinance. So as of this current moment in time, it is illegal to operate a golf cart. Is that correct, law?
That is correct. Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you Mayor. Stephanie, thanks for coming to speak. We spoke on the phone. Shortly here, I'm going to ask to pull that for a couple of months so we can take it back to the DA so we can have input on it and just get more input on it and see where people want it to be. So I don't think it's a bad idea. Some other council members here that recommended that to me and I'm going to take that advice and do that. So we've got time. The golf cart season really doesn't start until April, so I think we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I would ask though, once again, the transparency. So when are these district advisory board meetings? I would expect that those would be transparent. I would also expect that all golf cart communities, the HOAs, are contacted and told that there is a district advisory committee. This is being suggested and that their input needs to be heard. Because as far, I stumbled across this. I stumbled across it and I notified as many people I could. There was absolutely not one person who knew anything about this ordinance. And if we've learned anything from this last election, it's that transparency matters. Being able to trust your elected officials matter. So I would entreat you to make sure that that has definitely gotten out to the community and that voices are able to be heard.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you. We stand on our heads to try to get people to come to district advisory board meetings. And we have the same three, four people that come. Every Monday at 6:00 PM at Wichita Water Works is District 5 Advisory Board meeting. Starting in April, we'll move that to the West Link Library when it's available, but right now it's at Wichita Water Works Administration Building, 6:00 PM on Monday. But you, all the neighbors to come, love to have input. We have a great board and glad to listen to your concerns.
So that covers District 5. What about District 6, District 4, District 3, 2, 1? How are those district advisory boards going to be publicized?
Thank you, Stephanie. As a matter for the record, wichita.gov/citycouncil has all the information regarding all six council members and their district advisory boards. They're also livestreamed. Their district advisory boards held once a month. You could look for all of that information. You can also sign up to the city's listserv, which then would get you all those alerts every single time that the... every single time that these council members meet. So again, there's a lot of information at wichita.gov/citycouncil. Councilmember Glasscock. Vice Mayor Johnston.
Okay. I'm gonna quick correct myself. Councilmember Johnson pointed out that I said every Monday, and I don't want to be there every Monday. It's the first Monday of the month. So just the first Monday of the month. And by the way, we buy Facebook ads to promote them. I do videos to promote them. I do everything I can to get the word out about those district advisory board meetings. So hopefully, people learn about them, get on the newsletter, try to build that newsletter list. It's in our newsletter. It's been in our newsletter. And we just want to be as transparent as we possibly can. We need help on the other side, too. We need people to come and be engaged. So thank you for coming and being engaged today.
Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to reiterate, wichita.gov has a host of information. You can find every single meeting in the city council. I will also say, all seven of us have made this council the most transparent possible. Up until this year, you were not, you would not have been able to speak from this podium because we opened it up for items if somebody didn't sign up in public comment prior. This council also voted allow public comment on consent agenda items. This is open to the public every single week on Tuesday. We have our district advisory boards. We also, I know, most of us have monthly town halls that are also engaging citizens. We all have email newsletters. We all try to actively engage. You can follow. Each one of us have a district page. District One through Six has a Facebook page that posts about these details as well. So I can speak on behalf of all seven of us. This council is working to be the most transparent council and allow opportunities like this for you to come before the council as well.
Can you please tell me how many times this particular ordinance was brought before a district advisory board or any public comments prior to the original reading, which was January 7th was brought up?
Yeah, so right now, we have about 25 agenda items on the council agenda today. And often, only one to two of those that are seemingly controversial come before the DAB. Not every item comes before district advisory boards. Zoning cases in a particular district come before district advisory boards. If zoning case was heard in District One, that doesn't come before my district advisory board. It only goes before theirs. And so not every ordinance that comes before this body goes before district advisory boards to get feedback, but we're always trying to actively engage citizens in this process.
So just to be clear, this one, the golf cart ordinance, was never brought to any district advisory board. So even had I-
I can't speak for every district, but not for mine.
Even had I gone to the district advisory board, it would not have been brought up during that time. Is that right?
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. Since you're here, I'll just tell you, District One Advisory Board is the first Monday of the month at 6 o'clock over at Atwater Neighborhood Resource Center. I don't rotate the location and also have a district breakfast. That's always the first Saturday at 9:30 over at Atwater. I do rotate that from time to time, so if you go online, you'll see that. To Councilmember Glasscock's point on Facebook, if you type in Wichita District and then One and Two, like down through Six, you'll see all of our pages. You can add those and see what's going on in those districts. But I'd also love to have you at District One. Our breakfast, we have the best food, much better than District Three, so always have some good food there.
Thank you. I just want to make sure, though, that you have all your upcoming ordinances that are up at your district advisory boards, because then that would be, you know, a good use of time. Other, you're still at a gotcha stage, is you've gone to the district advisory boards and then this is brought up in the newspaper.
It is up to the council to send that to district advisory board, like Councilmember Glasscock said. There are a lot of things that don't go to DAB. We've had things in the past, the NDO, I can't remember if Ethics did, but some of those things that give more public engagement will go back to DAB for feedback to see, one, is it going in the right direction? Can we add to it? Should we take away our climate plans, things like that, tree policy went. A lot of that is to inform and also engage. So this one did not, but we can from the bench say, hey, we want this to go out to the district advisory board, and it would.
Sure.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming up and speaking today. If, once you sit through a district advisory board, you might see why we don't have every ordinance that comes up. Some of them can last until midnight. I'm a lucky one. I have mine on Wednesdays, but a lot of my fellow council members have them the day before council. So sitting up until midnight and then sitting through an eight to 10-hour council meeting can be kind of tedious. Mine is the first Wednesday of every month at the Water Center. District Breakfast is the second Saturday every other month, and I think if you look at the council members up here, you can decide who has the best breakfast in the city of Wichita. Also, I think maybe as punishment, Vice Mayor Johnston should be having a district advisory board meeting every Monday for a little while to discuss.
All right. But I do appreciate you coming up and expressing some of your issues with this, and I do hope to get more feedback. I do have concerns about safety. So I was one of the four who did approve this because I do believe having some freedom within your own community is important. But I also have concerns with safety, so maybe that'll get worked out a little more with some feedback from our district advisory board.
Thank you.
Again, Stephanie. We now have room for three more individuals to address the council. If you do, just come forward.
My name is Amy Petrowski. Hi, JV. How are you? Good. I live at 5205 West 26 Court North in Sandcrest. And that golf cart ordinance that was just pushed through without none of us knowing is going to upset a lot of the people. Sandcrest is a lake neighborhood. You drive around it. I don't really have much else to say except to invite you all to come to my house on July 4th and see the community involvement with these kids. Safety is not an issue. Life 360, and to see how fast my kids are going. That is how I monitor it. There's never been any safety concerns. Everybody's responsible. We all pull together and parent all the other kids together. But like I said, come to July 4th. Come to my house. Attend the 4th of July parade, golf cart parade. There's decorating contests with the golf carts. The kids are involved. It's dunk the HOA members into the pool, which we all love to do. So I'm here to voice my opinion on this. I very much disagree with it. It's why I moved into Sandcrest.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Amy. Just one quick question and then one issue. When I say, talk about safety, my concerns are more driving on arterial roads.
On which roads?
Arterial. So like, you know, if you're driving on Central, if you're driving on-
Sure. That I disagree with, but-
Right.
In a lake neighborhood, when it's just there, you know, on the side streets, there is no issues. There has not been any safety concerns in Sandcrest at all. I follow the board meeting minutes. There's never been anything addressed with safety.
And talking to your neighbors, is that the impression that most people get, is that we are currently allowing golf carts to be in residential and now we're cracking down on it?
Yeah, it's not, it's a city issue. It's not anything to do with Sandcrest at all. It's just all left up to the city, from what I understand, but it's still going to happen.
Right. See, up until this point, and I think that Councilmember Glasscock talked about it earlier, we haven't been catching anybody, but it has been restricted up until this point. So this ordinance actually allows golf carts to be driven in the neighborhoods, whereas previously, we did not. So if a police officer saw you driving your golf cart in your own neighborhood, you would have been ticketed for that. Whereas this ordinance allows that over 18, and there's some concerns there. It sounds like you guys have some-
Yeah.
-issues with that.
Yes.
So I just, maybe it wasn't our, it's not our intention to really crack down. It's more opening it up to a point. But to your point, we could have done a lot better job communicating this.
Absolutely. I'm glad Stephanie pointed that out. That was another huge issue I had with this being pushed through with no communication at all. I can assure you that there's not a lot of people in Sandcrest that even know about this or Emerald Bay.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Amy, I just wanted to say thank you for coming. Not very many people take me up on the opportunity to come hang out with us on Tuesdays, so I appreciate you coming. I know we spoke over the weekend about this, and I did reach out to Emerald Bay. Yeah, not a lot of people know about it, so I'll be doing some community engagement through District Six because I do have a lot of the HOA communities that this would affect. So appreciate you coming, and Stephanie, thanks for coming.
We have room now for two more individuals to address the council. I see none. I will bring it back to the bench. I will have just one comment to city manager Layton. Can you please just address the very first comment that was made through Public Agenda? Can you please explain the city council, city manager type of government system that we have?
Yes. It's a representative democracy. The mayor is elected at large, and the council members are elected from districts. They set policy direction for the council, or for the city, and then hire a city manager to then implement those policies and to coordinate staff in that regard.
Can you also remind how many votes there are and how many votes are needed for any ordinance to pass or any law to go into effect?
Generally speaking, it takes a majority of the council for votes. In some cases, there's a supermajority that's required by code, but that's fairly rare.
Thank you very much. So in other words, one vote per each of the council members and mayor, no veto power by the mayor, and also it takes four votes, a majority of the four, sorry, the four individuals, to pass any ordinance or any proposed ordinance that would come before the council. So each of us is entitled to our opinion, and it's just one person's opinion. At the end of the day, it's the vote here from the bench that gets recorded. So again, the letter sent to the group that first came during Public Agenda basically is just one opinion, my opinion only, does not mean that that means it's the council's opinion unless it is voted on from this council. So again, I just wanted that for the record, that I'm only one opinion and only one vote with no veto power. Thank you. City clerk, Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Consent agenda items one through 12.
Are there items to be pulled or further discussed? Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. As I said previously, I'd like to pull Item 10, the part regarding the golf cart ordinance. And I'd like to be able to have a couple of months' worth of opportunity to discuss it at our district advisory boards. So if maybe you're okay with the mayor and city manager, maybe we can look at March 18th, which is a night meeting, put it on the schedule. It'd be a good opportunity for people to be able to come who are working to a night meeting, too. I would strongly encourage people to come to the district advisory board meetings. They don't all go to midnight either. District Five, we're a little more efficient.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, did you make a motion?
I made a motion.
Okay.
Motion to do, yeah.
Okay. And I'll second it if that's okay, but I would also, oh, I'm sorry.
I believe the motion is to take it off the consent agenda, approve the rest of the consent agenda, and then make that motion.
Okay. May I just address this topic, though? I know it was, sorry, we're making a little sausage today. I know it was mentioned to go to district advisory boards, which I appreciate, but I would also just like to check the temperature of my colleagues of having a workshop on this. I think it's complicated. I don't, just from what I'm hearing from constituents, I don't think there's going to be a super easy solution. I know that police don't recommend it. That's going to be a factor. Public works has major concerns. I think that if ever there was a topic that warranted some robust discussion, this would be it, based on the feedback that I'm getting. So I would just recommend that we also have a workshop. So if that needs to extend it and maybe not be in March because we can't fit it in February, that to be considered. Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for our city manager. Is there, I know we can't take maybe every single ordinance, but how do you decide, or is that just up to the council, what goes to district advisory board or workshop and so on?
Mayor, council member, it's really up to the individual council member what they want to bring forward. We bring planning items forward, which in some council districts takes a significant part of the agenda. And then there are certain items that are directed from the bench to go to the DABs because they are somewhat complex and require more public input. And then after that, it's really up to the will of the council member what they want to get advice on. I think it would be somewhat impractical to try to predict what could be a controversial ordinance and what council members would want to bring to their DABs. We'll always support a council member who wants to bring any item that we have upcoming, and we'll provide a staff presentation if necessary.
I know it's a shocker that I'm an over-communicator, but I think that, you know, I think we all hate the idea of working backwards and, you know, maybe, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Johnston didn't know that this would be as contentious as it is. Obviously, I don't think he did this intentionally, but I think, you know, we all work really hard to build or rebuild trust with the community, and this is just kind of an accidental black eye that we're going to have to try to clean up. So I'll be doing lots of outreach within my district and pass that along to any of you if it happens to work for anybody in your district that might not be able to make it. But I think this is something that we need to work really hard on. We're not going to make everybody happy, but at least give people the opportunity for input to make the best decision possible.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Ballard, too. I agree with you. I had no idea this would be this controversial. I thought making golf carts legal when they're illegal now would be a good thing. It's just that people have some concerns about the, I think mainly about the age limit, about 18. I'd be glad to kick it back to the district advisory boards, get more input, and massage it where the most residents are comfortable with it.
So I have one agenda item to be pulled from the consent. That would be consent agenda item 10A. Any other items to be pulled from the consent agenda? I see none. I move to approve the consent agenda without item number 10A.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Now we're on consent agenda item 10A. Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'd like to pull this item, which we did, and send it back to recommend to the district advisory boards and possible workshop, if that necessary, and get more input from the community and then bring it back, hopefully if it works on our night meeting on March 18th.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I likely will not be supportive of the deferral because we'd be going back to full prohibition. I believe that we should have a less restrictive ordinance when it comes to golf carts. That's what I try to do from this bench, and that's what I believe we should do. I would like a plan where we could still give community feedback. However, this comes back before the council and we amend it later, that we don't go back to a full prohibition or continue the full prohibition. Again, I believe that people should be able to cross artillery streets. I believe that people should drive in the core of the city. I believe that anybody with a valid driver's license, and not just 18, should be able to do it. I think it's, when we're looking at different modes of transportation, everybody has different modes of transportation. I think we should encourage different modes of transportation. And I think that we're having so much discussion of allowing the people a freedom of movement is not something that we should be doing. So I likely will not support deferral just because I don't want to take us backwards. I want to move us forwards in a, forward in a direction. But I appreciate the willingness to try to get to four votes on making it less prohibitive.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. Just for District One, I would like to set my March DAB. I have six zoning cases in February, so kick that to March for me.
I will ask city manager, if there could be a plan, if this moves forward, could we compromise and also- we compromise and also have part of our workshop in January, have this discussion since a draft has already been created regarding an ordinance to make it legal? Because again, right now it is illegal to operate a golf cart within city streets. How we can have that in our January workshop as council members to discuss and then a plan to take it to the six council members district advisory board meetings in February slash March before the March 18th nighttime meeting?
Mayor, it's your prerogative how you'd like to handle it. I was hoping for a February workshop with preliminary input from the DABs that we could bring back to you and try to reconcile any differences between the DABs. Now, that won't work as if District One can't handle it until March. However, we could have all the other DABs weigh in and then when he has his March meeting, you could be testing what you talked about at the workshop.
Okay, so the plan now would be to bring this to all the district advisory boards minus District One between now and the February workshop. And during the February workshop, city staff will have gathered all the feedback from district advisory boards and help craft a different or a adjusted ordinance so that again, we would discuss it further as a council in front of the entire public at the evening meeting on March 18th. Now we have a plan. Would you like to, so because we now open it up for public comment, I see no further questions from the bench. We will now open it up for the public. If anyone would like to speak, you can come up to the podium, state your name, and then you can address the council for five minutes.
And Mayor, if I could clarify, this motion is only to defer. It's not on the discussion of the merits of the golf cart ordinance. This is only discussion on the motion.
This motion is simply to discuss deferring it until the March 18th meeting, but it does allow for public comment. Anyone from the public who would like to address this?
Stephanie Pittman, 2828 North Wild Rose Court, Wichita, Kansas, 67205. I would just encourage the council to utilize the template ordinances that are already utilized. Oletha, it's a very good ordinance. You have Valley Center. You have Goddard, Park City, I believe. I believe even Derby, Andover. So there is precedence to what sort of ordinance is allowable to the public. I believe if you would have something that allows, as Councilman Glasscock stated, crossing of arterial streets, that is only important if you live in Foxridge and you're driving your golf cart across the street to go to your golf cart course, which in my, I'm just using my very own specific experiences. Second is nighttime golfing, so long as you have a street legal cart, so long as it's registered, so long as it has slow moving and so long as it has a motorcycle type rated light, it should be approved, just as it is everywhere else, as well as a licensed driver. I think these are all restrictions that keep in mind on one hand, public safety, and on the other hand, allow for freedom of movement, freedom to enjoy your neighborhoods and community. I think you would have a lot of support with those sorts of limited, non-draconian ordinances.
Thank you, Stephanie. Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Stephanie. We did look at all those. Legal, looked at those. Captain Stevens at the Wichita Police Department, looked at all those and been working on it since the end of summer, a long time, a lot of meetings with police, Public Works, Parks and Drac. And we did look at all of those, came up with this. So we'll kick it back and please come to our district advisory board meeting and let us know your thoughts. Bring your neighbors. We'll see where we go from here.
And I would ask any workshops, I know that it's, I'm not sure what the way of working with the workshop is, but I think that it would be prudent to allow some community members as part of that workshop.
I will address that. Workshops are actually for council members to massage ordinances or policy. So it's really staff giving a full presentation and then council members discussing it in a free and open format. When it comes back to the council, that's another opportunity for public, but really encourage district advisory board meetings where you provide that feedback. And I will direct the city manager during those district advisory board meetings, please address the fact that there's concern regarding nighttime golfing. Please address the concern regarding valid license, so the age, the current proposed ordinance is 18. I hear that people want it at a reduced age of those who have a valid driver's license. The third is addressing the ability to have golf carts in the core of downtown Wichita. That is a restriction in the proposed ordinance, so we'd like to hear from DAB members and the public. And then last but not least, the passing of arterial roads, whether it's in a protected sidewalk or a protected traffic light, just addressing how you could possibly move from a neighborhood street to an arterial road back to a neighborhood. So those are the four key areas. We'd like to hear feedback. Thank you. I see no further comments. We'll bring it back to the bench.
I guess I need to make a formal motion?
The motion has already been made, I believe. If you wanted to clarify anything, this is an opportunity, but you have a motion in a second.
Okay, just need to vote.
So we have a motion to defer and a second to defer. I see no further comments from the council, so Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Yes. Defer to March 18th. Motion passes six to one. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
K-96 Improvement Project, de minimis impact finding.
Good morning, Mayor. City Councilmembers Paul Gunzelman, Public Works and Utilities for the record. This morning, I'm providing a report on the K-96 Improvement Project, de minimis impact finding. As you know, the Kansas Department of Transportation is designing improvements to K-96 between I-135 and East Kellogg. The proposed footprint of the improvement project will affect three parks and one trail, K-96 Lake Park, Chisholm Creek Park North, Chisholm Creek Park South, and the K-96 Bike Trail, as indicated in light green on the map. The Federal Highway Administration conducted a study of the four affected park properties. The FHWA report finds that unavoidable impacts would be considered de minimis impacts under Section 4F of the Department of Transportation Act. A Section 4F de minimis impact involves a minor use of protected resource and after taking into account avoidance, minimization, mitigation, and enhancement measures, results in no adverse effect to the activities, features, or attributes qualifying a park, recreation area, or refuge for protection under Section 4F. KDOT is seeking concurrence on this finding from the City of Wichita. On September 24th, 2024, the City Council pulled the item from the consent agenda for discussion. City Council approved delaying taking action on the de minimis impact finding until the October 15th, 2024 City Council meeting. On October 15th, 2024, the City Council approved delaying taking action on the de minimis impact finding indefinitely, pending receiving additional information from KDOT. KDOT has now provided a preliminary path forward, which requires approval of the de minimis finding prior to taking next steps. If approved today, the de minimis finding will allow KDOT to move forward and complete the environmental clearance. And the preliminary path forward is to construct the project in phases, with Phase One being woodland and rock interchanges, followed by Phase Two from I-135, including interchanges at Hillside and Oliver. And then Phase Three would be the Web Road interchange, and then Phase Four would be south of the Web Road interchange to East Kellogg. In addition, right-of-way acquisition for Phase One and Two, including Web Road interchange, will be first. The, on January 13th, 2025, an update was provided to the park board, and the board is in support of the de minimis findings. A little bit closer look at these locations. The K-96 Lake Park, 0.8 acres out of 46 will be affected by new interchange ramps between K-96 and I-135. These areas are currently unused portions of the park with no amenities or other features. Taking a little bit closer look at this, the red line indicates the current, currently where the fence is. The purple line indicates where the fence would be moved to. This still allows, I wanted to make sure that this would still allow mowers to be able to mow the area between the fence and the water. Chisholm Creek Park, both of these, so the north side, 1.3 acres will be affected by construction of the new interchange. To the south, 1.8 acres of the, out of 282, will be affected by the new interchange and part of the K-96 Bike Trail will be affected as well. Taking a closer look at the south park, the north park, it will affect a parking lot up there and we are working with that. And we have other improvements to the park as well that we're working through coordinating that. Regarding the Chisholm Creek Park to the south, it's a little bit difficult to see. However, the current pathway is in the light gray. With the new pathway showing in blue, that will be reconstructed to make that hole again. And then the K-96 Bike Trail east of Web Road, out of eight miles of the trail length, approximately one-third of a mile, will be affected on the display, the current loop ramp, its internal. That would be the eastbound off-ramp to Web Road and then to the, to south of that is the eastbound on-ramp to K-96. The interchange will be made larger. And let me back up. The existing pathway is, it travel, it is on the west side of Web Road from 29th Street. It crosses at the existing signalized intersection where the ramp terminals are, existing ramp terminals, and then follows along the north side of the hatched area in green. The new eastbound off-ramp to northbound K-96 will be made larger as well as moving the eastbound ramp on-ramp to K-96 is moved to the south to line up with the residential street and will be signalized. So those folks utilizing the path will travel a little further south on Web Road, on the west side of Web Road, and cross at the new location of the eastbound on-ramp. The blue line shows where the new path will be. And then also that, as you can see, goes through Fire Station 18. Regarding the next phases, right-of-way acquisition will be on Phase One and Two and will include right-of-way acquisition at the Web Road interchange. It's a little bit, another display of showing where the path is, will be moved, the gray line, and then the new pathway to make that hole again as well. Financial and legal considerations, financial considerations, concurrence with the de minimis finding will not have an impact on the city. KDOT will continue to coordinate with the city of Wichita as the project progresses, which will include a negotiation and acquisition process. Compensation negotiated through KDOT's acquisition process for park and trail property is not impacted by a de minimis finding by FHWA. Any proceeds from the acquisition of the park land may be used to improve trails and boardwalks within the Chisholm Creek South Park. And the Law Department has reviewed and approved the letter as deformed, and it is recommended that the City Council approve the de minimis findings, and I will stand for any questions.
Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Paul. My only question, I'm supportive of this, is around K-96 Lake, where you mentioned they would move the fence line and still be able to mow. Is this an opportunity to talk with KDOT about more native grasses or flowers that don't need to be maintained so they wouldn't have to mow anything?
We can ask that, yes.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Paul, for the presentation and the work. So it seems like the impacts that we'll have is some of the lake will be taken, just a little bit. The gravel parking lot will be shortened and then possibly have to be expanded because it takes out part of the gravel lot. And then the bike trail, having to move the bike trail. Does that sum it up?
That is correct, yes. The fence will be moved towards the water edge around the K-96 Lake. The parking lot there, north in the Chisholm Creek Park North, will be impacted so that we will, and we do have improvements to that park, so we're coordinating those efforts, but yes, so it will have to be shifted a little bit. And then the trail itself, yes.
Okay, and this would also allow us to move forward with discussions about Fire Station 18?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and be able to possibly find some funding for that?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks, Paul.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hoheisel asked a couple of my questions, and I know initially there were some concerns from Great Plains. I assume that we've answered whatever questions that they had lingering.
To my notice, yes.
I see no further questions for Paul. Thank you very much. We will now open it up for public comment. See none. I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I just wanted to state that I attended the original park board meeting when this was first presented by the consultant for KDOT, and there was not significant discussion, and it was passed. I have attended every community meeting that we've had regarding this project, including presenting twice at my district advisory boards, a couple times at the Hughes Multi Complex Center. I'm looking at Paul because we've been to so many. I think I could do the PowerPoint for KDOT by now, and no one has ever expressed any concern regarding this. I've also spoken with folks at Bike Walk Wichita and the Health and Wellness Coalition, and they don't see significant concerns with this, so I will be supportive today. And thank you, Paul, for all your work on this.
Councilmember Tuttle, would you like to do the honors?
Thank you. Appreciate it. I would move that the city council approve the de minimis findings and I think that's probably all we need to do. Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Funding for multiple water utility infrastructure improvement projects.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of City Council. For the record, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. Excuse me. The item before you would approve funding for seven critical water infrastructure improvement projects. The current adopted capital improvement program includes funding for these projects. These funding amounts have been accounted for in the cost of service analysis in the current rate model, and their approval will not impact current water rates. The projects include replacement of the Hess vacuum priming system, rehabilitation replacement of air relief equipment for the Cheney Reservoir ozone treatment system, improvements to the city's two water towers related to maintenance inspections, additional automatic flushers on the city's distribution system in fringe areas of the distribution system to improve water quality, funding to complete construction of the Maple Booster Pump Station, and then funding for two supervisory control and data acquisition upgrades related to ongoing operations of existing assets and their, how they fold into the new water treatment plant. treatment plant. Vacuum priming systems are important for these large pumps that run in, in Hess Pump Station, because trapped air in the pump can cause cavitation, premature wear on the pumps. In some cases, if enough air builds up, it could cause catastrophic damage. The old system that's in place now is antiquated, no longer functions, and so a new system is needed. This also allows for better control of the water levels in Hess Reservoir. At Cheney Reservoir, the city owns a ozone treatment facility. Ozone is generated, it's injected into the raw water. This takes care of compounds that can cause taste in water issues, other toxins associated with harmful, harmful algae blooms, things like that. The existing system is in need of replacement, because it has been repaired multiple times. It operates in a highly corrosive environment, and it's necessary to gas off any excess ozone within the system, because ozone is a highly corrosive gas. The city owns and operates two elevated water storage tanks. One is located near 21st and Wood Lawn. The other is on the Wichita State University campus near 17th Street. They're inspected annually to identify maintenance needs. Repairs to the tanks will include things like patch the exterior coating to protect the tank, replacement of safety equipment, safety cabling, as well as replace a vent on one of the reservoirs that's deteriorated, no longer compliant with regulations. The distribution main quality pressure support project will provide for automatic flushing devices in select areas in the distribution system. This is typical in fringe areas where development hasn't caught up with the expansion yet, and we may have not enough turnover within the water pipes, and so the automated flushers allow us to dial in on the amounts and the times when that needs to occur, rather than pulling people off of other projects or other work to go out and manually flush the system. The pilot project for one of these was carried out in 2024, and it proved to be very effective. Design of the Maple Booster Pump Station has been completed, and we need to move forward with construction on that facility. The pump station is located on Maple Street, on the north side of Maple West of 135th. The project will provide for an expanded improved building, additional pumping capacity, and backup power for the facility. The SCADA upgrades and virtualization, virtualization projects will integrate and upgrade multiple water treatment sites to provide further reliability and increased security. This will allow remote sites to be operated, or off, outside the fence sites to be operated remotely from the new water treatment plant, and it will also provide new servers that replace aged servers with the best available technology. This will increase security as well as functionality and operability. As I mentioned before, the adopted 2025 through 2034 CIP includes funding for these projects. The budgets have been established or estimated in the amounts of $500,000 for the Hess vacuum priming system, $500,000 for rehab and replacement of air relief equipment for the Cheney ozone system. One, $1.2 million is available for the elevated tower repair. Staff recommends initiating $200,000 for the needed work at this time. There's distribution, distribution main pressure and quality support project allows for $500,000. $8,750,000 is provided for the distribution Maple Booster Pump Station project, $900,000 for the SCADA upgrades, and $300,000 for the replacement of the servers, the virtualization servers. Staff recommends initiating funding at the, the full funding as stated in the list at this time for an aggregate total of $11,650,000. Therefore, staff recommends that City Council approve the projects, adopt the resolutions and notices of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures. Thank you, and I'll stand for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Don. Questions for Don, beginning with Mike, Councilmember Hoheisel.
Mike is fine, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Don, for the presentation. Just one quick question. Earlier today on the consent agenda, we took a million dollars from the 1.2 for the elevated tower repair, to put it into the Cheney Pump Station upgrades. Do we feel like $200,000 will be enough to address any of the maintenance issues or repairs for the elevated, elevated tower repair?
Yes, sir, it will be sufficient. The, the work that this will fund has been accumulated over the past few inspections, and so we're confident that this will be enough. We'll take a look when we, while we're developing the next CIP and program, the proper amount based upon what we expect to see in the future. But we're in really good shape. We had some major upgrades to the water towers within the last 10 years, and it got us in really good shape on those.
Okay, thank you.
I see no further questions for staff. Thank you, Don. We'll begin with public comment for this item. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. I will move to approve the projects, adopt the resolutions, and notice of intent, as well as authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Sim Golf Course Irrigation Vendor Selection.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Here before you to talk about the Sim Golf Course Irrigation selection process. So the Department of Parks and Rec operates four municipal golf courses. Third condition that golf courses are critical for the quality of play for patrons. Enhancing the customer experience increases the golf system's financial viability, and the irrigation system at Sims Golf Course was last renovated in 1988. On August 13th of last year, staff presented a capital spending plan for the City Council for the golf system. On August 20th, the plan was approved by the City Council and incorporated into the 2025 to 2034 adapted capital improvement program. It includes $8 million over four years to fund improvements at the four courses. Includes 1.45, 1.5 million in 2024 for golf irrigation improvements. On December the third of 2024, the city authorized the initiation of the irrigation project for Sim and McDonald's Golf Course. So a little analysis on this, the request for proposals for solicitor for vendors for golf course went out on November the 8th, and they were due on that particular date. And on the 22nd and 25th, the staff screening committee reviewed proposals, conducted interviews for four vendors. Following the interviews, they selected Landscapes Unlimited LLC as preferred vendor based on the experience, to propose work plan, schedule, the cost, the comprehensive proposal, and the design team involved throughout the process. So they had significant experience in the golf irrigation process. Crews were regularly trained and tested. They come with a 25-year warranty. Ability to upgrade the sprinkler heads included in the base bid. Commitment to an aggressive 60 to 90-day timeframe of getting the projects completed. And one of the key things over that, they were willing to leave the existing irrigation system in place while they were installing the new one, and will also committed to fixing any things that may break during that process, so we can continue to have that system in place to irrigate the course while they're doing the transition. The design team will review the original specification, and staff ensure that the best fit for the city's need as they move forward. So the financial consideration for this, the Landscapes Unlimited proposed a 1.45, $1,450,000 total package. Contract has been prepared with an added negotiating items for an amount not to exceed 1.469870. Funding for the contract is available within the project budget previously approved by the City Council. So the Law Department has reviewed and approved the contract as deformed. It is recommended that the City Council approve the vendor selection, approve the contract, and authorize the necessary signatures. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Reggie. We'll begin with Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Reggie, thank you for the presentation. So I noticed our green sheet had two different things. This is, the proposal includes a 25-year warranty, and then it also says there's a commitment completing the project with an aggressive to 60 to 90 days. So I went to go look at the contract, and the actual contract states that they have 120 days from the notice, not 60 to 90 days, and then, and that's in subsection two. Subsection four says that regarding maintenance, the contractor agrees to warrant the work and set improvement for a period of one year from the date of completion and acceptance from the city, not 25 years. So is there somewhere in the contract that I'm missing that? Or that's on page one, item number two and item number four?
And it's my understanding that the contract, it comes with, and I can get clarification on that as well as we move forward, but it comes with the 25-year warranty on the actual. The first year may be on the workmanship, but I will have to look at it to see, to, but the actual system itself has a 25-year warranty that comes with it.
Okay. Would legal be able to check that out before we vote on this?
Before we vote on it?
Yeah, before today, because I don't feel, if, if it's one year versus 25 years, and 25 years isn't stipulated in the contract, then...
We'll need a few moments then?
Sounds good.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. Thank you, Reggie. We'll now take it to public comment. Individuals from the public who would like to address this item regarding golf course I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench, but we're waiting for law to review that contract, so we could take a quick break.
Mayor, if you'd like, I'm more than willing to take the next item, and then we can bring this back if, if you want.
So motion to table this until next, will that be tableed until the next item? Since we already opened comment on it?
Table, just move it to later.
Just move it? We have to have a motion, or can we just do that?
You should have a motion.
How about, I will motion, I will motion to move this item to the end of our agenda for new business.
Perfect, thank you.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion to delay passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
First Amendment to the Ballpark Facility Maintenance and Use Agreement.
Mayor, Members of the Council, Bob Leighton, City Manager, I have the, actually I have the next two items. The first one represents an amendment to the Ballpark Facility Management and Use Agreement for what's now known as Riverfront Stadium. In 2018, the city did a significant amount of work to bring affiliated baseball back to the community, and at that time landed a AAA team that was to locate in a new stadium on the site of the old Lawrence Dumont Stadium, and also provided for the construction of a baseball museum. Star Bonds and TIF district approvals were necessary in order for us to be able to move forward with that project. The project has been successful to date. The stadium has been constructed, and we've had affiliated baseball playing full-time since 2022. However, since the agreements were signed, specifically the lease and use agreement was signed in 2018, there have been significant changes. First of all, there's been a change in terms of affiliation. Major League Baseball took over, minor league baseball eliminated minor league, and also eliminated a number of affiliations around the country. We were fortunate that that did not happen to us. However, they did create what was known as the Major League Baseball Professional Development League. As I said, several cities actually lost their teams and had their stadiums go empty. Some backfilled with independent baseball. We were not unscathed, however, minor league, or Major League Baseball, excuse me, moved the Winds Surge affiliation from AAA to AA during the restructuring. However, they also, by doing that, did us a favor, because they reduced the travel burdens placed on teams, and we had a financial liability associated with that travel. With the unfortunate death of the prime owner of the baseball team during COVID, there was a change in ownership back, dating back to 2022. New ownership group, DBH Wichita LLC, took over the franchise on December 5, 2020. That group took on all of the obligations and has successfully operated the team and the stadium since that time. One of the provisions in the original agreement had to do with the naming rights for the baseball stadium. The revenue from naming rights, revenue, excuse me, the naming rights revenue was to be split between the team and the city. It was under a pretty complicated formula, which allowed the team to first recover its expenses associated with the naming rights. The city then was entitled to a certain amount of money capped after that, and then the team was to retain anything above that amount. This process would have required auditing on the part of the city and discussions and negotiations with the team every year to determine what the acceptable expenses were and what the final revenue would be to the city. Recent negotiations with the team have resulted in a much simpler approach to sharing naming rights revenue in a way that actually will benefit the city going forward, give us a predictable revenue source. It will also allow us to escape a important provision that required the city to contribute $200,000 a year towards travel expenses. So what you have in front of you today is an amendment that would address the change in franchise ownership, the realignment of minor league baseball under Major League Baseball's guidance and their regulations, and also the new naming rights revisions. As I mentioned, the first part of the financial benefit for the city is that we will no longer be responsible for up to $200,000 in liability for air travel associated with teams visiting to, visiting Wichita. Additionally, we, in the first year, will receive $117,500 in naming rights revenue from the team. That amount will increase by 3% every year over a 15-year period. During that 15-year period, it's estimated that the city will receive just slightly less than $2.2 million from the naming rights. If we combine that revenue with the management privilege fee, which is basically the rent that we receive from the team for the use of the stadium, we'll be able to contribute fully to the capital reserve fund. Our agreement with the team indicates that, starting in 2027, we'll put $250,000 a year into a maintenance fund. And again, the whole idea of having a healthy maintenance fund is to keep us from dipping into property tax dollars to finance any improvements to the stadium. It's estimated that, under the current agreement as proposed with, on naming rights, along, combined with, we'll be able to accumulate a little over $4 million through the life, the remaining life of the lease agreement for capital expenses. In addition to that, this naming rights agreement allows us to create a reserve fund, and we believe that by the end of the lease term, we'll have a little over $3.5 million in the reserve fund. That can be used for additional capital expenses if there's a need to go beyond the $4 million, but it also allows us to have flexibility to put some money into debt service obligations going forward. The proposed agreement has been reviewed by the Law Department and by MLB, and approved by both. So it's recommended that the Council approve the First Amendment to the Ballpark Facility Use and Maintenance Agreement, the subsequent contractual, contractual restatement, and authorization of the necessary signatures. Mayor, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager. We'll begin with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate all your work on this one. The $200,000 air travel contingency fund, have we used any of that in the past?
No, we haven't, because we never operated as a AAA team. So with AA, the travel requirements are not as restrictive or as onerous, and so we have not had to dip into that fund.
Okay, so that $200,000 is essentially a fund that we've just maintained. We haven't put $200,000 in every year. We've just had a...
That, that is correct. We've had a contractual obligation to pay towards travel expenses if there is an issue, but at this ti, to this point, there has not been, and we benefit by removing that clause from the agreement, so that, that could not be used as a contingent liability in the future.
Okay, so... Okay, so is that is that 200,000 going, are we moving that to the GO or are we moving that into ballpark maintenance?
That 200,000 actually would have come out of the management privilege fee. So that money now will go into the capital reserve fund as well as the additional reserve fund. So that's what allows us to put 4 million aside and then have 3.5 million in reserve on top of that.
Okay. Now, the $250,000, we said that it was capped at 250,000 in the old agreement.
Right.
Is that how we interpret the the contract here?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
If you look at the old contract, it says the next 250,000 in naming rights received by the team for the city.
Yes.
Now, now I, this is a different day and age now. That was supposed to be with the AAA team. So I recognize the need to renegotiate that because AA is better baseball, in my opinion, but as far as sponsorship abilities, it's less than what a AAA team would be.
Right.
So I'm just a little curious about that. But again, I support the renegotiations here. So that's what it was interpreted as, as capped at 250,000?
It was, yes. And that's after expenses were taken out by the team. And that's where the complicated formula came into play because every year it would determine how the team would provide benefit for the sponsorship. And there are a number of ways that a sponsor receives benefit, which can include, you know, seats and signage and other factors that come into play. And every year it can be different for the naming rights sponsor.
And the hope was for a million dollars in naming rights.
Well, I believe that the owner, at the time that we approved the original agreement, had hoped for naming rights of a million dollars for a AAA team. But not only have we dropped to AA, which has hurt us in that regard, but we've also gone through COVID and a difficult economic period. So it's not realistic to think that type of revenue could come back to the city. But again, I think a better financial position because we will not have the $200,000 that we would be required to have. Plus, we'll have 117.5 growing every year. So we'll be beyond $250,000 that will come to us in that regard.
So it's about.
That will benefit us in that regard.
So the plan with the original agreement was about 25% of the revenue for the naming rights, and now we're sitting 31%?
Well, it'll depend on the final deal that's negotiated by the team, but we will be better than the 25%.
Okay. And you feel we're better off for protecting ourselves as far as, I guess, the TIF, the CID, using this, being able to protect ourselves and not dip into the GO fund and going forward?
Councilmember, that's a great question. The creation of the 3.5 million dollar reserve fund actually does provide us some cushion should we need that money for CID or TIF debt.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
A follow-up question to that. What is the city's responsibility regarding Star Bond and TIF, where we would not want to dip into reserve fund?
Right.
But there's not enough development right now around that area?
Right. Good question, Mayor. The Star Bond funding as well as TIF will operate as a TIF district normally does, and that is that you probably will not be able to meet all your debt in the initial years with the understanding that you'll exceed your debt requirements in the latter years so that by the end of the debt period that you will have paid off all of your debt and hopefully even had more. We do have, again, by getting the 3.5 million dollar reserve, we provide ourselves the cushion so that we could help with that that backstopping of those first years if that's what we want to do.
And what's the predicted or estimated in the first few years?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I don't have the debt service schedule for the Star Bonds, CID, and TIF. Those are all the moving pieces on the project.
That be provided to the council members?
Yes, yes, we have that.
I was looking, you did send during the agenda review, the October 16, 2018 meeting agenda item, and I think that's what Councilmember Hoheisel was referring to. I have a couple of questions regarding that agreement from back in 2018. One of them is spend up to an additional $6 million on a pedestrian bridge, riverfront improvements, and other critical infrastructure necessary for the ballpark development. Can you just give us a status update on that?
Sure. There were actually, there's, I can't remember, Mayor, which that is referencing. There are actually two, the term bridge is used twice or in two different ways. First of all, there was a skywalk, which was referred to as a bridge between the hotel and the office development. I don't believe that's what's included here, though. I believe the $6 million was anticipated for the bridge that would connect the East and West Banks. And the decision was made, I'm going to say in 2020 or 2021, that that would become part of the East Bank redevelopment project at the time that it would be constructed. So in other words, the team and the city agreed that we would not go ahead with the bridge, mostly because we don't know where the terminus should be on the East Bank, and we don't know what redevelopment will occur. And so it didn't make sense to put a bridge across a river to a certain location when that may not fit into redevelopment plans. So that's where that stands.
And again, the question I really was most interested in is not even that, it's the responsibility of the city regarding the Star Bond and the TIF district. So if that can be provided to the council so that we are aware of not just the current situation in terms of our shortfall, budget shortfall, but how that would play into future years and the shortfall.
Yes.
So if that can be provided to council members, so we, again, have all the data. And then lastly, I know that this was agreed upon back in 2018, so two councils before me. And so I just, I want this project to be successful as it needs to be successful so we can pay off our debt. But can you give us a status update regarding the development around that area?
Yes, Mayor. The West Bank development, which we've contracted with EPC for that work, they have filed all of their plans for their development. They're in final review by staff, and they've actually mobilized on the site as of last week.
So construction should begin soon?
This spring.
Very good. Thank you very much, City Manager. I see no further questions from this bench. We will now open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Council. My name is Twyla Purity. I live in District One. I live in the Polo Club. I'm a big proponent of contract compliance, and I think you've heard me say that before. Contract compliance, I think, is critical to, or is a good business practice that can't be ignored. So if these changes from AAA to AA, I guess I get the sense that some of this stuff happened a long time ago. So you might want to start thinking, if these changes that were material to the contract happened a long time ago, why is it just now coming up? Right? You just want to stay on top of your contract compliance. The other thing I heard was a $250,000 a year maintenance fund. How do you protect that money so that it's not used for something else in the future? You know, you all know that deferred maintenance has been a big issue for certain things like parking structures, and it's not the first time it's come up. So is there a way that you as a council, or maybe it's in the agreement, but you can protect this 250,000 so that you have it when you need it, and then several years down the road to prevent, oh, we need to maintain this, or there's deferred maintenance of X millions of dollars and we don't have the money? My only comments, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Twyla. We'll continue with public comment. I see none. I will bring it back to the bench. This resides at Councilmember Glasscock's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I did, there's a comment. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I did drive by the stadium two days ago, and it's really exciting to see fencing around some of the potential development areas, and I'm excited to see what's to come. I motion that we approve the first amendment to the Ballpark Facility Use and Maintenance Agreement, the subsequent contractual statement, and the authorization of the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Ordinance authorizing use of Hyatt Proceeds and Resolution Amending Resolution Number 16-478.
Mayor, members of the council, Bob Leighton again. Today's action is going to involve the reallocation of about $157,000 in Hyatt Proceeds funding that has been previously allocated by the city council. Back in 2016, the council authorized the use of $10 million from the sale of the Hyatt Hotel for the improvement of approximately 212 lane miles or about 40% of the city's poorest-conditioned residential asphalt streets over a two-year period. By 2019, all of that work had been completed, and there was a surplus of about $157,000 that resided in that account. Fast forward until to last year and the session of the Kansas Legislature, and during that session, the legislature appropriated $2.5 million for environmentally at-risk testing related to contamination sites in Sedgwick County. Of that amount, $1 million was only available for testing if there was a local match in the same amount. The funding was primarily targeted for the 29th and Grove area, but was also to be available for other contamination sites that have already been identified in the county. The testing is include a number, is not to be limited to, but include a number of specific tests. Those are outlined in the first bullet point. For the last, at least six months, Sedgwick County, the City of Wichita, and the Kansas Health Foundation have been working on developing a comprehensive program for testing, which would allow for immediate as well as long-term cancer screenings for residents in the affected contamination areas. To leverage the full state allocation, the community will need to come up with a million dollars and match. It is recommended that $125,000 be allocated by the council, that Sedgwick County Commission allocate another $125,000, and that the community provide the remaining funding of $750,000 in order to fully leverage the grant possibility. The $125,000 would be moved from the Hyatt Street Maintenance Account to an environmentally at-risk testing account. No additional, as I mentioned, no additional street maintenance work is anticipated, so we can close that account. In order to fully close it, we would move the remaining funds of $32,449 to an account that you created, again, at the time of the sale of the Hyatt for transit. So that was another citywide benefit, an account that benefited citywide. And that money would be used to help with the implementation of the new service plan. Not only do you need an ordinance to allocate the money for testing, but you also need a resolution to recognize that you're closing out the street maintenance account. Law department's reviewed and approved both the ordinance and the resolution as to form. So we're asking the city council to place this ordinance on first reading, adopt the amending resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you.
Questions for staff?
I see none. I actually have just one comment, though, prior to public comment. This is really to help with alleviating the 29th and Grove contamination, but it is to address the health aspects of it. Can you just give us a quick update on the collaborative efforts that have gotten us to this point under the leadership of Councilmember Johnson?
There have been numerous parties that have been involved in this program. We've had, probably should start with the health clinics that are in the front line in terms of providing testing. They have helped us understand the nature of the requirements going forward. As a result of that, we've put together, I think, the outline for a plan that deals with immediate testing as requested or required by the legislature, but also recognizes that one test, one year, doesn't necessarily provide the kind of benefit that impacted residents could have. And so that's why we're looking at doing something that is both immediate as well as long-term. The county representatives, the chair of the county commission, county manager have been actively involved. Councilmember Johnson has been involved, and Kansas Health Foundation has helped provide very useful guidance as we have looked at a more comprehensive approach to benefiting residents specifically in the 29th and Grove area, or those who have been impacted by the contamination in that area over a long period of time. So those are folks who probably, many of them don't even reside in our community anymore or in the Plume area, but will still have the benefit of testing should they decide to take advantage of it under the plan.
Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you.
I see no further questions. We will now open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. My name is Levonta Williams, PO Box 8695. First of all, I do want to say thank you to the mayor and City Councilmember Johnson for attending the MLK celebrations over the weekend. So it was a long weekend. I can hear my husband saying, what are you doing now? And I'm just going to say, Bill, I'm getting in good trouble. So I have some questions about how we're looking at this. I live in the area that was affected by this contamination, and so it is something going on that is very near and dear and close to my heart. It's kind of like the plane crash that we just celebrated for 60 years and having a brother who was on his way to the store, and that affected our family as far as the plane crash. And we keep talking about these things, and we talk about them 50 or 60 years later. And so for me, that's what we're doing here, is talking about a contamination that happened over 50 years ago, but you have a community right now that is paying for that now. And that is because many of them, as well as myself, had no idea about a contaminated water issue in that particular part of the community. It ranges very much further than 29th and Grove. Does it go on the east side of Grove? I'm told no. It goes all the way down to 9th Street. So this affects quite a few people. And the thing that I'm hearing here, which bothered me, was that we had money left over. We had money left over. And so that's what the city is going to put towards this health issue. And we're not even going to take all of what was left over. We're only going to take 125, and we'll put it over there. The rest is going to transportation. For me, and I'm going to try not to get upset, but for me, this is saying those lives don't matter. You're saying they don't matter. But they do. They deserve more. We deserve more. We have to look at that from another standpoint. We deserve more than what you're saying. We deserve a sit at the table. I gave up a doctor's appointment because I felt I had to be at this table to hear what was being said and how it was being said and how money is being applied. I'm not blaming one particular person. I'm saying that it's our position as a city to understand and to see what's going on and to fix it as well as we can and to say, those city members, those community members that want to come in and have a seat at the table, and let's discuss, and let's look, and let's talk. I don't remember that happening except for being at the Boys and Girls Club. And even there, there was so much disrespect because you had at least one KDH member who disrespected that community tremendously. And then when I asked him and grilled him on that, it was, oh, I didn't say that. But the community said, yes, you did. Those things are important. Then you have KDHE who says that, oh, some type of cancer could come from this. We have had so many deaths, and we don't know how many have died from this particular issue. And then we know that infant mortality was the highest in that zip code area, along with 67214. Infant mortality. However, KDHE says low birth weight babies were affected. My first thing to think about is low birth weight babies also goes along with. My first thing to think about is, low birth weight babies also goes along with infant mortality. And so I'm just asking us to look a little bit more into what we're doing, and what we're allocating, and how the community can help. And when I hear community involvement and money, are you saying that we have to pay for it? That we have to help find money in order to take care of this situation? Please. I know that we can do better. I know that we can do better. And I just had to come and help you to understand how they are feeling, how we are feeling. "Oh, we had a little money left over, we'll do that." But how many people have we lost? How many people have we lost? We can't put a finger on it. I lost, I lost, I'm the oldest of nine, and only four are living, because we played in the water. We drank the water. We had no idea of the severity of the case. So I'm just asking us to make sure we're looking in every unturned place, turn over every rock that we can, make sure that we hear this, make sure that EPA understands that we need to look at everything before we do it. Did we, as EPA, look at the health that could come from those large poles? I don't think we did. Did EPA give us a health report on the 100 trucks that ride across the highway? I didn't hear about it. Those are the health issues I'd like to know. I'd like to know if EPA is saying, "It's okay, we've checked, and this doesn't affect their health." And there are so many others. There are so many other things that are going on that we need to find out, is this going to affect someone's health? So I think that's all I'm asking, is that we just make sure that we're all sitting down together, that we're all at the same table, that we're all working on the same issues, and it's not just one particular area, because we swore to the city first. We swore to the city before we swore to one particular district. And so for me, it's all of us. It's all of us looking at the same issue. I thank you very much, and I'll just stop from there. I know my time is over.
Thank you very much, former Councilmember Levanta Williams.
Thank you.
I do have a question for city manager. Ms. Levanta mentioned the federal partners, EPA, state partners, KDHE. What are they bringing in terms of financial contributions to the table?
That's a good question, Mayor. We've not had active discussions with EPA recently on the funding. However, the funding that the state is providing was granted by the legislature. So they have $2.5 million that they've brought forward to help us with the testing. And if we're successful in having a total local match, then there'll be $3.5 million that'll be available. And I do want to mention that the, there have, the public meetings that have transpired over the last two years, those voices have been heard, and that's why we're at this point. I think that's what led to the legislative initiative. That is what's driving all of those at the local level who have been working on this. I don't know that, I think the most productive thing is to look forward. How do we address the issues that have come up from the community over a period of time to make sure that they have acceptable health outcomes? And that's why I think this idea of funding a long-term solution takes into account what former Councilmember Williams talked about, and that is recognizing there are a lot of folks who were impacted by this over a long period of time, and now they will have a low or no barrier way of being tested going forward.
We'll continue with public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Levanta, Councilmember Williams, for coming up. This is just one step. I agree with you wholeheartedly. What comes next, that's going to have to be part of the discussion as well, making sure that members of our community are involved in that discussion as well. So I do want to acknowledge that. And you're not lying, because I think according to the county, there's 208 sites around the county that might have similar results here. So I think this is providing a template for how do we start to get the initial testing aside. I think there's going to be some litigation coming forward with various parties. I'm not in tune of anything special there. I can just kind of foresee that happening as well. So again, this is a template. I know I have sites down south, and sites out east and west, and all over the county that we're going to have to address. But we also want to recognize the particular disparity that goes on within this particular neighborhood as well. So this is just, again, the first step. A lot of great partnerships to get to where we are now with GraceMed, Hunter Health, Commissioner Beatty, some from the governor's office, and some of our state representatives as well. A lot of work that's been going on, and Councilmember Johnson as well. So I just want to acknowledge all the work that's gone on so far, and then the work that's going to have to continue again in the future from this point forward. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Levanta. Just to address some of that and the steps we're taking today, I would say that the community voice has definitely been heard in each of those meetings, whether some of those meetings were productive or not. The voice has been heard, the frustration has been heard. We've heard the stories of people who are dealing with cancer now, have dealt with cancer before. I haven't publicly said that my great uncle actually had kidney disease. When he died, he lived a block across from the pollution area. So I believe that's been heard, and that's what's been spurring action, whether it was me or Commissioner Cruz, now Chairman Beatty, our city staff, the county staff. We've all been talking about that, because not only did we hear a community voice, but we also knew that it was important to address this. I am grateful for everyone who has been at the table, our FQHCs, who are tasked with doing this work, those who just started doing it at GraceMed immediately, Sedgwick County, the Medical Society, Kansas Health Foundation, KUMED, Project Access at one point. I mean, all of these folks have been at the table talking about this in meeting. Community will be at the table as well going forward. As this plan that we have continued to work on progresses, there will be much more engagement intentionally with the neighborhoods who've been impacted, those who represent those areas, and making sure that they understand the plan going forward. But we have to get to that point, and today is just a small step forward to that. When you hear about community raising money, that does not mean you need to write a check, although we wouldn't turn down anything. We are working with the Kansas Health Foundation to not only hopefully receive some funds with them, but they'll also help us look for other philanthropic opportunities to raise money. So that's not asking the people who've been impacted to give anything, but it's looking for other ways to address this issue together because of the mandate that we have to have a local match. So we're working through all of that. And again, working with Sedgwick County, we were looking at $125,000, as indicated in the presentation. They would be looking at $125,000. That gives us a quarter million of the million-dollar match. I'm fairly confident we'll get to that full million. And again, with the funding that the state allocated through KDHE towards this, I believe that we are on the right path with a plan that addresses some immediate testing needs as well as long-term. The biggest challenge with the long-term is, as you talk about, this has been a 50-year issue. The main thing we looked at is how do we address everything without begging the legislature for assistance every year? Money was allocated that had to be spent by June 30th of this year. That's not fair to anyone, once we realize that people have to get more than one test. So if we gave them one test and said, "Hey, it looks like you might have something, but we don't have enough money to test you again," that would be a problem. So looking at long-term is the most important thing for anyone who's still here, moved away, or might learn about it later. So we are, again, taking the voice of the community to heart, working on the plan to address those things long-term. And we will definitely welcome community members into going forward. But a lot of what I had explained to a few of the community members I know that talked to you is that internally, we had to work with our different levels of government. We had to figure out how things worked. We had to make sure all our questions were answered, and that we didn't do anything we couldn't do or weren't supposed to do. And then also, working with the FQHCs, a lot of sensitive information was being shared, and that was why it was just us. But going forward with the plan, community will be able to be at that table as well. So I wanted to address all of that. Again, I'm supportive of taking this step. It wasn't a, "This is all we have left to give." We've been planning towards this for quite some time, and this just happened to be a pot of funds that we could use to make that work.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Williams, thank you for your comments. I believe this is a priority of government to address this, and I know that Councilman Johnson and the manager have been very integral in this and working with partners at KDHE and the EPA. I support these funds, because I see it as an addition to what we're trying to focus on in that area. But I think you offered a really good reminder that we need to hear from the bench as well, is not just answering the sins of the past, but also mitigating this and future consequences, and making sure that a lot of the decisions we have up here, that we're taking those things into consideration for future generations, to make sure we don't have this happen again in either that community or a different part of the community. So thank you for that reminder today, and appreciate you coming forward as well.
I will just add one more comment. The remaining funds from the Hyatt sale will now get us to zero on that fund, and this will, again, $125,000 will go towards, if approved, towards this local match, and then $32,449 will go towards transit. City manager, can you just address that, how that money is going to be used in terms of transit, public transit?
Mayor, the, there was a public hearing, as you know, last week on the new transit plan that will be coming back to you this spring, after all the public comments have been received and incorporated into the plan. There are multiple phases for implementation, and there, depending on the council's final action and direction, we have about $1.5 million already available, possibly a little bit more, plus this money that will be added for implementation. How that will be used will, again, be determined by your actions on the plan. It's possible that you may want to do something in terms of expanded hours, which is not in the first phase. It may be that there is equipment that we want to purchase, and we'll need a local match. So again, you'll have some control over how that money's spent. We wanted flexibility in that regard. And as you know, Mayor, paratransit has been an issue that has come up a number of times, and maybe some of that money could be used to benefit our paratransit system.
Reminder, is it wichita transit plan dot com? So folks can go to that, as it was presented just last week on Thursday to the public. Can you correct me if I am wrong? Wichita Transit Plan dot com? That is correct. I just looked it up. So for those interested, this is another piece. This is separate from the 29th and Grove contamination site, but we are talking about these Hyatt funds, and a portion of that will go towards public transit, so public buses. Wichita Transit Plan dot com. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I also forgot to address another future thing. As we know, the groundwater is still contaminated, some of the soil is still contaminated. The city is working with Arcatus and Union Pacific on getting those devices in the ground here at some point as well. So we know until those get into the ground, there's still contamination, and that 10-year clock does not start. So it is a goal of mine, as well as I know the council, to get that done this year. Our Public Works Utilities team is being very diligent on trying to get through the last couple hurdles to get that to happen. So expect some news on that, too, at some point, once we get through that. But they did hold a open house in June of last year to talk more about that, with all of the designs and potential locations of where those devices would be.
Councilmember Johnson, would you like to do the honors?
I would. Thank you, Mayor. I move that the city council place the ordinance on first reading, adopt the amending resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
A 2413 TCRS LLC requests the annexation of land generally located on the northeast corner of West MacArthur Road and Highway K42.
Good morning. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. So as you heard, this item is being presented today because, one, this is an island annexation, and the state statutes require a resolution to be sent from the city to the county, requesting that the Board of County Commissioners find that the annexation will not hinder or prevent proper growth and development. And the second reason is because this is generally the opportunity for public comment on the process. In terms of the request, the applicant is requesting annexation for three parcels. The requested annexation would be an island annexation, because it does not touch the city of Wichita, although it is very close. The subject site is located approximately 245 feet southwest of the Wichita city limits. In terms of the property, it's generally located near the intersection of MacArthur and K42. The site is approximately 4.37 acres in size, and it is undeveloped and in agricultural use. The applicant has indicated that they intend to submit an application, rezone the property, and has already submitted an application to replat the property into 15 lots. There's mention of context, and that's identified what's surrounding it, as you can see here in the aerial, is further identified in detail in the staff report. In terms of services, the staff report also includes a review of services and the ability of the city to provide them at the subject site. That includes a review of water service, sewer service, streets, police, fire, and parks. In terms of community plans, the subject site is within the Wichita 2035 Urban Growth Area, as shown in the comprehensive plan. In terms of financial considerations, staff estimate that the property as currently developed would result in just under $10 in annual city tax revenues. Now, future property taxes unknown at this time, because the applicant did not submit specific development plans. However, we do know that they have indicated they intend to develop it as duplexes. Future capital, maintenance, and operation costs for city infrastructure and services are unknown at this time. In terms of council action, it's recommended the city initiate the annexation process and adopt the resolution. And just a note on process, that this is an annexation case and not a zoning item, so it's recommended the city council take public comment on this item. With that, I'll take you through just a few more slides here. So here's the aerial. Now, on this one, you notice the blue lines, those are water lines, and the green lines, those represent sewer lines by the city of Wichita. In terms of related cases, there's a couple of plats, one that took place previously and one that is just going through the process right now. In terms of the annexation process, again, the purpose, the reason why we're here is to follow state statutes, which requires the city council would request the county commission to make a finding. So again, the recommended action. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? I see none. We'll now open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Glasscock's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion that the city council initiate the annexation process, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Selection of Appeal Panel to hear appeal of suspension of an off-permise retailer license. Will there be a presentation, or do we just assign?
Mayor, I'll jump in. There is no presentation. This is just a procedural requirement for the council to hold a public hearing, not a public hearing, an administrative hearing that's not part of council meeting. What is needed today is just a motion to appoint three members to serve on this panel.
Can we appoint them from this bench, or this is an off?
This is from the bench, the three of you serve on this.
Very good. I believe that we heard about this during agenda, and two individuals were, or two districts were also identified. This happens to be in District Number One, which is Councilmember Johnson's district, and then it was going to go according to numerical order. Districts One and Two have already served, so now it's Three and Four. So that would be Councilmember Mike Hoheisel and Councilmember Dalton Glasscock, along with Councilmember Brandon Johnson. Councilmember Johnson.
I whispered my name, you explained everything, so, yes, I volunteer myself.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. With drawn names, is that, are we able to do that on another level here, or am I kind of stuck in this? We can't go newbies? No? No? No appetite for that? Okay. Okay, I'll remember this. Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I'll also accept.
Thank you very much, Councilmembers Johnson, Hoheisel, and Glasscock, who will be the three council members to attend this appeal panel process. So, I move to select the three council members, Johnson, Hoheisel, and Glasscock, to preside over administrative appeal of a license suspension.
Second.
Motion and a second. We also have Councilmember Tuttle now.
Thank you, and I'm not sure what Director of Law was going to say, but if I can offer some unsolicited advice, which I'm famous for, when Councilmember Johnson and I did this with then Councilmember Blueba, we didn't really go into it knowing exactly what to, what was going to happen. So, if you get a chance and if it's appropriate, the three might want to meet with Legal just so they have a full expectation of what was going to happen. It would have gone smoother, I think, if we would have known what to expect and how to prepare. So, just my thoughts. Thank you. Good luck.
Legal will be happy to meet with the three of you, and we do need to get it scheduled shortly after, so we'll be in touch.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have one quick question. It says the suspension is January 15th to February 13th. Is that suspension, it's stayed pending the appeal?
It has been stayed.
So, will it be like a 30-day suspension from, if we make that decision, or is the end date still February?
You know, it stayed through your decision. See what happens at the hearing. It stayed, as my understanding, until that time.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please recall item number two.
Sim Golf Course Irrigation Vendor Selection.
Councilmember Glasscock, you had questions. We are, in, in terms of the term of the completion date of the agreement, that is 120 days. The vendor has committed to an earlier completion date of 60 tonight. For the warranty, we have a one-year warranty on workmanship associated with installation. And confirming five years is the warranty required by the RFP, as the minimum manufacturer warranty of five years. We are not determined, not able to determine the 25-year warranty that's referenced in, in the solicitation documents at this time. So, it looks like more of a five-year at this time for the pipe or product and workmanship.
Okay.
One year on installation.
Will the green sheet be updated so that the public knows those changes?
We can reflect that on a note. It's been issued. That can be an add-on, I think, maybe, to. Probably the best way to do it? We are confirming that warranty, just to clarify, but we believe it is a maximum of five years.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. This may be a question for Jesse or for Reggie, but is it industry standard to have the 25 years listed on the green sheet versus the five years? I felt very comfortable with the 25-year warranty, given the replacement every 25 years. The five-year warranty worries me some, so could you maybe speak to that?
Why the 25 years reference on there? Because majority of the products that's been purchased are from Toro, and the manufacturer has a 25-year warranty on their products. So, that's why it's referenced in there with the 25 years.
Councilmember Ballard.
Never mind.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. So, it's 25 years warranty on the parts, five-year warranty on the contractor coming back in and replacing any of the parts, and then a one-year warranty on the workmanship.
And that's what we'll have to get clarification on, and I know that Toro itself has a 25-year warranty on the actual product itself. We'll have to get clarification on the vendor's installation and the cost with that timeframe.
Okay, so if it breaks six years down the road, we don't have to replace the parts, but we do have to pay somebody to come in and dig it up.
That's my understanding, but we'll get clarification on that.
Okay, and then the five years, we have a warranty on both the company coming in and then also the parts.
Councilmember, I'll jump in. We know that we've required the five years warranty on that. There may be a higher, longer warranty that the parts manufacturer provides. That's the only thing we can pinpoint to as a requirement for the, the product.
Okay, so then it's a one-year warranty on having?
Warranty on installation.
Okay, so the contract will come back in within a year free, essentially.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll now open it up for public comment if anyone would like to speak on the Sim Golf Course irrigation. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm supportive of the irrigation implementation. I am concerned about maybe the discrepancy. I have a few questions. So, this actually might be a follow-up question for Reggie, because I know that we're trying to get this up and running before the season. So, I think this completion would be, what, 60 days would be in beginning of April, or the 90-day period beginning of April is our goal. Would a delay to February 6th while we attempt to get these answers disrupt that process? If they said, what, the guarantee in the contract is 120 days, they said they could get it done within 60 to 90 days, so theoretically it shouldn't be, but what would be your take on that?
They gave a 90-day not to exceed. Once the actual contract, they've gotten approval to move forward, the existing system will stay in place during that timeframe, so we will still have irrigation.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to comment, congratulations to Jesse. That's why he's not here. He just had a sweet baby boy, so congratulations to him. You just asked if a delay would interfere with the work, and you said no. Reggie?
They're not moving forward with the work until we give them authorization, then have 90 days not to exceed to complete the project.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. So, would it be appropriate to maybe delay it one week and then just put it on consent since we have brought it up to the public, or is there appetite for that, or do we want to wait until beginning of February if we delay? I guess that's more.
It's, it's your decision, but that would be an option to continue till next week. But next week is consent only.
Yeah, I mean, it would be consent, so we wouldn't be able to have it on a public agenda, but if all we're seeking right now is just clarification of this, I don't want to delay any of the improvements, but it would be nice to have some clarification.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you. I think the point is to get things ordered to get it going. It's always a supply chain challenge, so the sooner we get it ordered, the better off it is. So, I, I would say we proceed. We know what the guarant, there is a guarantee, it's maybe unclear what it is, but, but there is a guarantee. You know, Toro offers 25 years on the parts. There's no way anybody's going to offer a 25-year installation on my house. Wish they'd done on my house, because I had lots of repairs on my house, so I would say we go ahead and approve it.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you. I would feel probably a little bit more comfortable with Councilman Hoheisel's suggestion. I'm just trying to do the quick math, or if, unfortunately, we have consent agenda next week, but, so February 4th would be the first day it could be heard here. That would put us at March 4th, April 4th, May 4th with a 90-day period. It doesn't seem like that would be prohibitive, especially if they said 60 days, that puts us at April 4th instead of May 4th. So, those are just some of my thoughts, but I'm still interested in discussion. I just have some concerns with the green sheet saying that the proposal included a 25-year warranty. Not that I believe staff is misleading at all, I just believe that, that is not what is necessarily inside of this right now, and we still have questions about what are the actual terms of the contract.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not, don't have a turf management degree, but if you're going to plant grass, you're probably going to do it in the spring. You want to make sure you have your irrigation not disturbing the planting of grass. So, if you're going to plant grass, you're going to do it in the spring, and you need the irrigation to do that, and honestly, May is too late to plant grass. So, that's, that's the only thing I would say. I don't know, can't speak for Jesse, I guess he's having a baby, his wife's having a baby, but that may be a consideration.
Are there other council members who would like to chime in on either delaying this or moving forward with it, knowing that the green sheet is incorrect or has not been verified at this time? Is there a motion from?
I move to take the recommended action, approve the vendor selection, approve the contract, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes five to two. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approve to exceed the gift limit as established by the Ethics Ordinance for Councilmember Tuttle to accept travel to attend the Early Childhood Advocacy Day in Topeka on February 5th, 2025 for the purpose of networking with early childhood advocates and meeting with lawmakers. The estimated gift amount from Child Start for Travel is $100.
I move, Councilmember Tuttle.
Hey, I just wanted to let everyone know that I'll be traveling with Tanya and with Adrian Ladd, who's our supervisor for childcare licensing, and so there will be no cost incurred to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tuttle. I move to approve this travel.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approve to exceed the gift amount as established by the Ethics Ordinance for Councilmember Tuttle to accept travel to attend a childcare site visit in Hutchinson on February 3rd, 2025 for the purpose of an opportunity for early learning advocates in Wichita to meet with early learning advocates and elected officials in Reno County and Hutchinson to share success and lessons learned. The estimated gift amount from Child Start for travel is $40.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Just to give a little bit of background, Tanya Bullock, who's the CEO of Child Start Inc., which I'm a board member, and we gave a presentation at a statewide conference about the economic impact of childcare. Some folks from Reno County, Hutchinson saw us, including an elected official. So, back in the fall, they came to see us and wanted to learn about what we're doing, and so now we are going to reciprocate that, and we're going to go to Hutchinson in Reno County and meet with a few of their elected officials, but then learn all the great things they're doing, and there will be no cost to the city. And I will come back with information learned so that I can share it with my colleagues and community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tuttle. I move to approve that gift travel.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Are there any appointments by council members? We'll begin with Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to appoint Randy Timmich to the Sustainability Board. All right, N D I.
Any other appointments? I see none. I move to approve the appointment made by Vice Mayor Johnston.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. We will now have Councilmember Comments. We'll begin with Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to highlight publicly, I had an opportunity to tour the emergency winter shelter yesterday. I think they are seeing numbers that they did not expect, almost hitting 300, and there's a lot of needs there for anyone wanting to help out. There are a lot of volunteer needs severely needed, just from the time I was there, they need help with serving food, they need help with cleaning. So, anyone who has any interest in that or wants to help, this would be a great time to reach out and sign out to volunteer. If you have any additional food, again, they were expecting numbers higher than the food that they had yesterday. So, if you have items that have not expired, there have been some folks who brought expired items, please do not do that. Our unhoused people deserve to not eat expired items, just like us. But if you have unexpired food or want to donate food there, they definitely could use that. So, again, anybody who can help out, who wants to help out, they need your help down at the shelter.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, last week I was at the State of the State, and kudos to Councilmember Tuttle for all of her work on childcare. That seemed to be a big topic that she shared about, and so appreciate the hard work that, that you're doing here for Wichita and Central County because it's spreading throughout the state. And also on Saturday, I'm having my District Six coffee at Evergreen at nine o'clock, if anyone wants to come hang out.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be the cheerleader for the city for a quick second. Just a reminder to everybody in the community of the U.S. National Figure Skating Competition, which is going to be in Wichita this weekend. Previous communities have seen an $8 million economic impact from this, and so I'm planning on going three or four nights this week to enjoy the competition. Tickets are available online. I would highly recommend individuals to go. It's really exciting driving by the arena and seeing signs, again, driving by the stadium and seeing fencing up, driving by the arena and seeing signs up, and then knowing that we also have the basketball tournament coming up as well. It's super exciting. And then because the city manager left his position at the art museum, I had the chance to be the city's appointee to the art museum, and this upcoming Friday, there's a new exhibit that's being presented. I do not want to butcher the title of the exhibit, but it's also called Interwoven. It's going to be opening up on Friday. I think it opens to the general public on Saturday. It has to do with Pakistani art. There'll be, it's an incredible facility. I toured the museum again this week and just seeing how they rotate the permanent exhibit even differently from when I was there four months ago. I want to give a shout out to the curator, the entire team at the museum, and would encourage everybody to attend. It is free, except the rotating exhibit cost, but the permanent exhibit is free to all Wichitaans whenever the museum is open.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank Jamie Buster for coming back today. Apparently, she's a glutton for punishment, so she agreed to step in today. It's always a pleasure to see your, your smiling face up here. And also to our comm staff, why am I always getting stuck on the wings? It's almost like you guys don't want me in the middle, in the shot. I, I see what they really think of me, but I, I think if I'm in the middle, our viewership goes up. So, I'm just putting that out there in case we want to switch again before the, but three out of the four times I've been, had a seat up here, it's been on the very end, so noted. That's all I'll say.
I actually, I think Johnson, Councilmember Johnson, just said he'd be willing to trade, if you'd like to trade his seat.
Symbolically, I'm like at the end of my term, and that's the end of the bench. I can bring you over here. Everybody has all the beard and all of that. I'll just sit on the end. I can look directly at you.
So, from this bench, I know that everything has to be voted on, so is there an actual formal move that you'd like to make, Councilmember Hoheisel?
No, ma'am. I was just having a little bit of fun. We have to have a little bit of fun from the bench from time to time.
Thank you. I do have just a couple of comments before we go into executive session. Sorry to burst the bubble, sorry, councilmembers. But I do want to say that there's some good news about Wichita, and so I always like to share that. Just last week on Friday, Wichita was named one of the most affordable places to retire by Go Banking rates, so this is cause for celebration. And as we have shared on social media last week also, Wichita was named one of the top 50 best-performing cities, according to the Milken Institute, that measures economic vitality of 403 U.S. cities. That report, again, great way to celebrate our community, and it is a culmination of community-wide effort. community-wide efforts to diversify and grow Wichita's economy. That report is one that past and present councils, other elected bodies like Sedgwick County, the private sector like Greater Wichita Partnership, and the Wichita Chamber of Commerce, the education community like Wichita State University, and everyone who lives, works, and plays in Wichita can truly be proud of, and it's an inspiration to continue to work to expand and diversify our city for continued growth. With that, I will now move to the executive session. So right now it's 12:08. I move that the City Council recess into executive session for 20 minutes to receive information on a lawsuit pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, pending litigation, as well as legal advice. This is due in part to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest. Now, this executive session is 20 minutes in length, so we also need a quick little break. So I propose that we get a five-minute break, so 12:15 will begin this executive session and come back from executive session at 12:35 PM.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. We'll go into executive session after a quick break.